Good morning councillors, I'd like to start the meeting by acknowledging the Kwanzaa Murka people who are the traditional custodians of the land which we meet this morning and I would also like to pay respect to their elders past and present and extend that respect to any other Indigenous Australians who are present. Just the regular reminders that we are live streaming this meeting, it's being recorded in audio and video. So please be aware of the fact that parliamentary privilege does not extend to this chamber as does for state and federal parliamentarians. So you're reminded to be cognizant of this in any comments which you make during the course of this meeting. I'd also like to remind councillors to use the microphone speaking and for any councillors or officers who are attending virtually to please use the mute button when you're not speaking. In the event of an evacuation, I'd like you pleased to remain calm, follow my directions. The emergency exit is through the gallery doors on your left and down the stairwell, a stairwell to the exit on Blue and Hill Street. Just also a reminder councillors that this meeting will be conducted according to the standing orders and so just be, I want you to be aware of the processes that you're all familiar with. Public conduct during a meeting under section 8.4 of the standing orders, all members of the public present at a meeting must not without the prior approval of the chairperson make any audio or video recordings or take any photographs. Remain quiet and not disrupt the meeting in any way, please don't bring any meetings or placards into the, please don't bring any placards into the, a meeting or items that may cause a hazard or interfere with other people present. We ask that you be suitably dressed and turn all your mobile devices to silent mode and leave a meeting if you must take any calls. As chairperson, it is my responsibility to warn a member of the public present at a meeting who is not complying with any of these requirements. That I may with or without such warning require that person to leave the meeting and not return for such a period as decided by myself and chairperson. And this period may include future meetings. I haven't been advised of any leaves of absence, so now I would just like to quickly remind you once again councillors to sign your attendance sheet and the diligent board's application. And you need to do that before the meeting ends. It's now my pleasure to invite a member of our Redlands Ministers Fellowship, Mariska Dupreez of Seek Free Church, Redland Bay, is a member of the fellowship as I mentioned and he will lead us now in a brief devotional segment.
She, oh pardon me, oh I didn't hear that, you're okay. Good morning everybody, thanks so much for this honour to speak to you this morning and thank you so much for serving our city. As you guys do a wonderful job, I just want to open and pray before I read from the Bible this morning. Father, we just thank you for this morning, we thank you that we all are together, Lord, and we just pray, Holy Spirit, we invite you into this room right now and we thank you for your guidance this morning, in Jesus' name we pray, amen. This week I was reminded of a scripture and some of you might have heard it before and it's in Matthew 25 verse 23 and it says, well done, good and faithful servant, you have been faithful with a few things, I will put you in charge of many, come and share your master's happiness. Now, this story is about a wealthy man that entrusted some gold and silver to his servants and to one he gave five pieces, to one he gave two and to another he gave one. So the one that received five and two pieces actually took it and doubled it. But the one that received one took it and hid it, buried it in the ground because he was scared he was going to lose it and the master's going to come back and be very angry at him. Now, I'm sharing that this morning because I know that God has entrusted every single one of us in this room, this morning with some things, with things he's entrusted us and it might be five things, it might be two and it might be one. I just want to say regardless of how many of those things he's entrusted you this morning, I hope that he will look at each one of us this morning because we are made diverse and we are all made uniquely and we all are for a purpose. And that you will take it and not bury that one or that five or that two, that you won't put it away, but you'll actually take that and use it to the best of your ability to honour God in everything that you do and duplicate it, multiply it. And hopefully give it to somebody else and entrust it to them as well this morning. And that is short and sweet from me this morning, I would like to close and pray for you guys this morning before I leave the room and you guys go about your business if you don't mind. Lord, we just thank you again for each and every single person, Father God, I pray, Lord, God, for wisdom to be evident in this room this morning, Lord, I pray, Lord, that yours will be done in this room, Lord, and through this meeting today, in Jesus' name. We just thank you for every unique individual, we thank you that we are diverse, Lord, and I just pray a boldness over every single person to use what you have entrusted to them, to the best of their ability, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Apologies councillors, I'm getting used to the new format of the room, looking over here for around one of our team members to lead us in a devotional segment. He did have chocolate earlier, I'm sure, I'm sure he was ready for it, my, my first time with this new format. All right, moving on then to recognition of achievement, I do have a great honour today to recognise one of our team at the back of the room, Charlotte Hughes, who's a principal planner in our planning assessment team. Who has won not one, not two, not three, not four, not five, but six medals at the 16th International Dragon Boat Federation World Dragon Boat Racing Championships held in Thailand between the 7th and 13th of August. She proudly represented Australia in the Australia Aurora Senior A and mixed teams and was a member of the women's gold medal, gold medal winning boats at 200 metres, 500 metres, two kilometres and also part of the mixed bronze medal boats in the 200 metres, 500 metres and two kilometre events. So as the reigning world champions from the 2019 championships, the senior A athletes demonstrated exceptional skill, dedication and teamwork. And at the 2023 world championships, Charlotte and her teammates continued their legacy of success, aiming to inspire a new generation of paddlers and sports enthusiasts. So we extend our congratulations to our very own Charlotte Hughes for outstanding achievements on the international stage and I can't think of a better day for us to acknowledge you with some of the items on the agenda. So congratulations and if you wouldn't mind just coming up here Charlotte. Yes, where do you find time to actually work? Well done Charlotte. All right councillors, now we're on to receipt and confirmation of minutes, which is item 5.1 of our agenda. Could I please have a mover and a seconded that the minutes of a general meeting held on the 16th of August 2023 be confirmed? Move councillor Hughes, seconded councillor Edwards, any items of correctness, note they being none, I've put the motion, those in favour. Those against, that's carried unanimously. Next item is the declaration of prescribed conflicts of interest and declarable conflicts of interest and you're reminded of these responsibilities in relation to a council's prescribed or declarable conflict of interest at a meeting and details of those responsibilities are in your agenda. Please be reminded that all interests need to be declared at a statutory meeting of council and this means any prescribe or declarable conflicts of interest relating to an item being discussed at a non-statutory meeting needs to be declared at a general or special meeting preceding the non-statutory meeting or workshop. A potential list of items to be discussed at these non-statutory meetings are made available to all councillors with each workshop agenda before the preceding general meeting so you can make that declaration if need be. And of course you can make those declarations anytime throughout the meeting. Matters outstanding from previous general meetings, I hand over the CEO to stem for us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, there's a number of items here, a couple which have coming off today, 7.1, the notice of motion into the investigation into a location for a wildlife hospital, that will come to a future meeting of council. As will dot point three of 7.2, which is the subordinate local law number four on the local government controlled areas, facilities and roads, 2015 to 2023 community consultation. So that report addressing dot point three will come to a future meeting of council. There are two items coming off this agenda today of matters outstanding, 7.3 is the local government infrastructure designation consultation strategy for the Burke Dull Community Precinct, that's on item 14.1 of the agenda today. And 7.4, which is a secondary dwellings item, that matter will be addressed at item 15.3 today. 7.5 is the potential options to support the delivery of affordable housing on the Redlands coast, that report will come to a future meeting of council, as will item 7.6, the notice of motion, the report on council's programmes related to Environment and Protection and Biodiversity Conservation Act, that will come to a future meeting of council, thanks Madam Mayor.
Thank you CEO, next item councillors, you have been distributed with a merrill minute, that was discussed previously. So I'd like to table that and move that merrill minute, the council resolves to submit a right to information application to the Department of State Development, Infrastructure, Local Government and Planning, seeking access to the following, the full suite of inputs, assumptions and methodology used in the model for urban land use and transport interaction, which they refer to as the multi. To, to generate each of the regional growth scenarios and apparently there's been three of those, so we'd like to understand the assumptions behind those, which has led to the draft shaping SEQ 2023 update. Item two is the investigations reports relied upon to justify the proposed inclusion of the Southern Thorne Lands potential future growth area. Southern Thorne Lands and the urban footprint of the draft shaping SEQ, this includes but is not limited to the assessment conducted against each of the urban footprint principles espoused in the South East Queensland Regional Plan. Details of the analysis that determined that the entirety of the Southern Thorne Lands potential future growth area is required to be included in the urban footprint. Details of the sites in the region that were considered as potential alternative locations to accommodate future population growth, including what, including details in what methodology was used to evaluate each site and how some thorn lanes was determined to be the most suitable location. Also the point D is Department of State Development, Infrastructure, Local Government and Planning's consideration of the need for Southern Thorne Lands to be referred and potentially assessed under the EPBC Conservation Act 1999, including for example legal and environmental advice. Details on the Department of State Development, Infrastructure, Local Government and Planning's specific consideration of impacts on koalas, noting that Southern Thorne Lands was previously removed from the urban footprint to protect koala populations. And that conservation status of koala populations in Queensland was elevated from vulnerable to endangered in 2022, there's some background there councillors which I won't go through. We've had a discussion about this, it's really just about transparency and understanding the assumptions and the modelling that the state have used, which has been asked for a number of times, not only by officers and at Redland City Council, but also by myself as a member of the Regional Planning Committee. And so with that, if anyone else would like to speak against it, I'll just put the motion, those in favour? Those against, that's carried unanimously, thank you. Next item is public participation and we do have some people that have applied to council, so in accordance with section 6.10, council meeting standing orders, a period of 15 minutes may be made available by resolution. To permit members of the public to address the local government on matters of public interest relating to the local government. So can I have a mover please that the meeting be adjourned for 15 minutes to allow that to happen, move councillor Bishop, seconded councillor Edwards, those in favour? Those against, that's carried unanimously. Excuse me, our first speaker is Pamela Godsell from MacClay Island, would you like to approach the microphone then, just before you speak, I could just read you the drill. You have, might have seen some of the signage around chambers, it regards public participation at meetings and it's our usual practice to require any person wishing to address the council to state their name. Oh sorry, I'll start again, just, just some of the outlines of what's required for a public participation from yourself. There's some signage around the chambers that actually explains it, if you haven't seen that, it's our usual practice to require any person wishing to address the meeting to state their name. The suburb or organisation that they represent and the subject that they wish to speak about. Just to remind you that this is recorded in the minutes of our meeting, which is a public document available for inspection at council's administration building and published on our website. I'd also like to advise you that the meeting is also being recorded in audio video and that by speaking you acknowledge and agree that that will be also be placed in the public domain. So just rundown, your name, suburb or organisation you represent and what the subject you wish to speak about. Also, we ask that you act and speak with decorum, be respectful and courteous, make no comments directed at any individual council employee, councillor or member of the public, ensuring that all comments relate to council as a whole and I have a responsibility to make sure all of that happens. Also to consider each application on its merits and also to determine the maximum number of speakers today, which we only have two. So with that, I also have one other responsibility and that is I can withdraw the approval to address council before the time period has elapsed. We normally give about five minutes, so that I'll ask you to start with your name, suburb, organisation and the subject you wish to speak about.
Thank you Madam Mayor, my name is Pamela Godsell Smith, I live on MacClay Island and I'm a representative of that wonderful thing, a very small community, there were three of us. And we raised the surveys and then we got this petition started. We got 667 signatures from locals and adults in the area. It's basically, as a daughter of someone who was a world champion swimmer in the 90 to 94 masters swimming. I can attest to the fact that swimming is very, very good for your health and we want to improve the facilities on MacClay Island. And currently there's a shark proof pool, which is subject of course to tidal variation. The base, the base of it is rocky, slimy, easy to hurt an ankle, sorry. And it also has no easy access into it for people who are getting wobbly in the knees or hips. And our average age on the island is currently 62. So the petition is to enlarge the enclosure size of Pat's Park to meet the needs of the community due to population growth on MacClay Island. The enclosure access improved to meet current disability standards, which are handrails and some form of eco-friendly ground cover to enable access for those with disabilities. I'd suggest that having been walking through national parks like the Cozy Osco National Park, they have a footpath through there, a raised footpath, so you can't walk on the ground at all. And because we've recently been the happy recipients of the new ferry terminal and on that is a non-slip pathway, which is an open grid. So any soil or wind or rain etcetera can fall through into the water or onto the ground and something like that would be very well received. The use of a new eco shark barrier, none of us want to swim with the sharks netting and it's really in need of either replacement. And it has fallen into disrepair, various locals go along and tied up with plastic tie, ties to make sure it's still holding. But, and it has in the past caught larger fish and they've died, so in view of the marine park status of the island, it would be really nice to be fish friendly. The enclosure is upgraded to meet current safety compliance standards, signage helped to direct people how to use the facility with safety and CPR signs so that the whole area is improved for public visitors, for the island visitors and that's basically it. This is the petition, Mark's, Mark's going to take hold of it and thank you very much for the opportunity to address you today.
Thanks Mrs Godsell Smith, so I could now ask. If I could now ask Rodney Woolpit, resident of Kapalaba regarding a petition to council regarding instruction of off-street parking facility. I'll just quickly read you the drill, just need to have you state your name, suburb or the organisation you represent and also obviously the And also, um, obviously the subject you wish to talk about. I think you might have heard the rest of the drill, so I'll allow you to start, Mr. Bullpit.
Thank you, members of council. My name is Rod Bullpit. I speak on behalf of more than thirty petitioners who live in a high-density apartment area in Pitwin Road North in Kapalaba. Uh, the subject is a proposal for better street parking. Where a stone's throw from Bunnings and adjacent to the popular Kapalaba Regional Park, we love where we live and we accept that more and more Australians out of necessity will soon experience the lifestyle of apartment living. However, such living accommodation also brings its challenges. And it's estimated that a hundred and fifty rate-paying residents are already accommodated in this high-density section of the cul-de-sac, with another eighty anticipated with the completion of at least another two apartment buildings in the near future. Despite regulations requiring developers to provide at least twenty-five percent extra onsite parking for visitors, the street's often full of parked cars and this congestion will undoubtedly increase in the near future. Now, many of these residents are older and currently using their walkers have to weave their way between parked vehicles on the roadway to get to the Kapalaba Park precinct, shopping precinct and Kapalaba Regional Park. Because it's only a rough gravel footpath joining the previously constructed concrete pathways. We were advised in March twenty twenty two that council had assessed our previous request for the installation of the missing footpath link on the western side of Pitwin Road North and had agreed to install this missing footpath section. This has not yet happened. In past years, council, in its wisdom, allowed the construction of an off-street public parking facility in front of the development at twenty five Pitwin Road North. And this popular facility caters for nine vehicles parked at ninety degrees angled to the street and efficiently reduces the parallel parking necessary elsewhere. In front of a quieter patch of the regional park, there's a wide undeveloped footpath area that it seems to us could easily be reconfigured into an off-street public parking facility and walking footpath, similar to the one that's already constructed and allowed by council in front of the apartment building uh, at twenty five Pitwin Road, just a couple of uh, buildings along. We respectfully request that council speedily consider this proposal and take action to meet this need. At the very least, please provide a concrete footpath for our older residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Bullpit. Thank you, councillor. Um, with that, councillors, I'll take a move and second to that, we move back into um, our meeting processes. Move councillor Mitchell, second to councillor Talty. Those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. Next item is petitions and presentations now have been advised, um, of a couple of petitions. So I might start with councillor Edwards. Councillor Edwards?
Sorry, Madam Mayor. Um, I have a petition from residents requesting improvements to Pats Park, McClay Island, with the undersigned request that council enlarge the enclosure size of Pats Park to meet the needs of the community due to the population growth on McClay Island. Enclose, uh, enclosure access improved to meet uh, current disability standards. It's our handrails and some form of eco-friendly ground cover to enable access for those with disabilities. Use of eco shark barrier netting so that the impact of the enclosure is greatly reduced. Enclosure upgrade to meet current safety compliance standards, examples, signage should help to direct people how to use the facility safely, safely and CPR. The petition is of an operational nature and be received and referred to the chief executive officer for consideration.
So moved by councillor Edwards, second to thanks. Councillor Mackenzie, those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Second petition, councillor Beridge.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a petition from residents requesting that council construct an off-street public parking facility and footpath at at twenty one Pitwin Road North, Kapalaba. We, the undersigned, request that council construct an off-street public parking facility and footpath similar to the one already stipulated by council and constructed in front of the apartment building at twenty five Pitwin Road North. It is estimated that a hundred and fifty tax-paying, rate-paying residents are already accommodated in this high-density section of the cul-de-sac, with another eighty anticipated due to the completion of two more apartment buildings planned for the near future. Many of these are elderly residents currently having to walk on the roadway to assess the Kapalaba Shopping Precinct and the Regional Park. Because there is only a rough gravel footpath across the gap between the existing concrete paths. The street is already overflowing with parked cars and a more efficient parking option has already been implemented at the other end of the cul-de-sac. I move the motion for this petition, which is in operational nature, be received and referred to the chief executive officer for consideration.
So moved by councillor Beridge, seconded by councillor Bishop. Those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. Order of business, um, I haven't been advised, or any other presentations, councillors? No one advised me of any earlier this week? So with that, um, is there any motion to alter the order of business? No? So we'll go straight to reports to council, starting with thirteen point one, which is our monthly financial report. Move councillor Edwards, second to councillor Mitchell. Would you like to speak to it, councillor Edwards?
Just, just briefly, uh, the opening balances for the current year are still to be finalized and ordered. However, I understand that Queensland Audit Office are going to be, yes, uh, going to be auditing this month. Uh, so the, we may expect some of those balances to change. This financial year's got off to a solid start as we have a year-to-date operating, operating surplus of twenty-three point eight nine million, which is favorable to budget by two point four eight million. And also impressive is that the capital, council's capital works expenditure is ahead of budget by five point five five million. Well done. And that's good news.
Thanks, councillor Edwards. Any speakers against? A question that wasn't asked the other day, no? Councillor Boglari?
No, I didn't ask it the other day. I was just wondering, um, I also noted the capital expenditure was ahead of time, which is great news. But I was wondering, is that our carryover or is that the new works? Because we have a significant amount of work that was about to be completed.
CFO, you can sta-, you can speak from there now. You have your own microphone.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. Getting too excited to get some exercise. Uh, thank, I know. Thank you, councillor Boglari. To you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to this. Um, yes, you recall from the meeting on the sixteenth of August, we talked about the capital carryovers. They actually never stopped, councillor Boglari. So as you know, just because the accounting standard says thirty June midnight is a close, we continue those works. So we have progressed um, from one July, both the capital carryovers and the work that you asked us to commence on the twenty sixth of June. That's part of the original budget. So they are in tandem. Both are progressing. I can't talk to particular projects. We have a project update later in the report. So you know the big ticket items, um, they're all proceeding, um, in terms of, um, the one that we talked to in this report is Wellington Street Panorama Drive. And I think, um, we're all aware that that's a huge success story, going great, um, for our city and, um, is on track. So I think from a capital, um, expenditure perspective, we are, uh, five million over um, on our performance at this time last year and also five million ahead of schedule. So with the same resources, um, just, um, working harder. And that's part of the infrastructure pipeline we've talked at length in this room. Getting things ahead of schedule, getting grants, getting money so that we can deliver it, um, in, um, the community's interests as efficiently, effectively as possible.
Good work. Uh, put the motion. Those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Uh, the next item is our Redland City Local Disaster Management Plan. Move councillor Talty, second to councillor Mackenzie. Um, now, I, I have, um, had a request that, that Mike actually talked to the changes in this and also um, as an opportunity to advise our community what work we've done for bushfire preparedness um, and what they can do to be prepared for what is turning out to be, um, a very kind of worrying season of bushfires.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so in, in terms of the, um, local disaster management plan, I'm very pleased with this, uh, new document. So, um, we have had a, a local disaster management plan since two thousand and four. Um, however, uh, we go through iterations of that plan and each year we update the plan. But every, uh, five or so years, we do a major refresh of the brand of the plan, um, which this, this plan is. So, um, there's quite a few new elements in this plan, including a new planning cycle. It picks up in some of the changes that are currently occurring in the disaster management space across Queensland, as well as picking up the new Australian Warning System, which is a nationally-based, uh, warning system, um, that is being rolled out and now across Queensland. So I'm very pleased with how this plan's come together. Has been endorsed by all the members of our local disaster management group, um, who have provided significant levels of feedback into that plan. In terms of the, the fire season, um, you would have all been well aware of, uh, some of the reports and, um, some forecasts for this year. We are in a El Nino year, um, so we are expecting a much hotter and drier, um, period, certainly leading up to summer and, and through summer. We've also seen fires already out around Tara and Cecil Plains, and there's been evacuations already in those spaces. So, um, we certainly, uh, work closely with other local governments that go through those processes to make sure that we're ahead of what, what's coming. There's been a lot of work done around our Redland city area as well. Um, one of the groups that council is involved in is the, uh, Area Fire Management Committee, uh, which, uh, takes in the Greater Brisbane region. And that involves a range of agencies that have la- large land holdings in the city, such as, um, park, uh, national parks, um, SEQ Water and obviously council. Uh, through that, uh, group, there's been a fa- a fairly significant level of planned burns done this year. There's been a greater level than we had actually planned for that was achieved. Um, significant burns have been undertaken across North Strabrooke Island. Obviously, that has one of the highest fire risks in the city. Now, we have burns, uh, that were done south of Dunwich, between Amity and Point Lookout, and then south of Point Lookout as, out as well. Uh, the idea of those burns is to put in, uh, buffers for those townships. Similarly, there's been a lot of track and trail work that's been done ac- across the city in terms of maintenance, as well as new tracks and trails that have gone in to provide better access to vehicles and the like when they go to attend these fires. Uh, there's also been a significant level of community engagement this year in terms of our bushfire awareness sessions that we've held across the city. Uh, we've also been attending quite a number of events and providing a lot of, um, information in that space. There's also been a letterbox drop to over sixty thousand residents of our hundred and sixty thousand residents uh, that are in either medium, high or high, uh, very high bushfire risk areas. And they've been notified of, of their risks and what to do around their homes to be better prepared. And there's some very simple things that residents can do around their homes, things like keeping their gardens clear. Um, so that if there's embers floating around, they don't land in the leaf litter and, and set the he- the roof on fire. Uh, cleaning some debris around their homes, making sure the home maintenance is up to date. Um, having a plan, um, if they need to evacuate, being aware of where to find warnings and the like. And we have been doing, doing a lot of work to update our disaster, um, dashboard, which is our, um, primary website that collates all that information. So it's much easier to navigate. So there's been quite a lot of work being done in terms of the actual on-ground mitigation, as well as community education to have people prepared for this season.
Thanks, Mike. Um, and I'm sure councillors know that fire is certainly one of the greater risks for our city when it comes to natural disaster events. So, um, it's good for us to be prepared and well done to the teams working with kayak on North Strabrooke Island, uh, as well as across the board here on the mainland, our tracks and trails. Would you like to speak to it now, councillor Talty?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and, and thank you, Mike, for the, uh, brief on the, um, thirteen point two. I'd just like to note to councillors that, um, it, this, this review is a, is a, is a required review under the, um, legislation. And we were required to go through tier one review, which is a self-assessment. But as is always the case with our disaster management team, they went one better. And they did a tier two review and, uh, and they're to be congratulated. We are, uh, noted across the state for having, um, a fantastic team. Probably, I would think, the best team in Queensland, uh, in our disaster management space. And, uh, I'd also like to, as Mike just, uh, uh, noted, our council, uh, fuel reduction teams have been out working diligently through the off-season, getting ready for this fire season. And I can say with confidence that we are more prepared for this fire season than we have ever been before. And, uh, and that is really something. And the community have been, um, being educated on, on many different levels as to the risks of the fire season, the new four, uh, four-point, um, fire, um, danger rating system, which is being rolled out across the state by QFES. And that forms part of this as well. And I was certainly there firsthand to see our disaster management teams at Redfest for two full days, um, updating people and telling them all about how to get onto the disaster board, how to get them, their, uh, warnings on their phones and how to prepare their homes for both fire and storm season, which are really important. Uh, so I commend this. I commend the officers who have put it together. And, uh, I'm very proud of the fact that Redlands is as prepared as we can be for any natural disaster that comes along. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Talty. And, um, may I just add that you can never be prepared enough for it, whether it's government or individuals. So, um, as much work as we can prepare for is not necessarily, um, and guarantee that we won't be impacted. So I just wanted to make sure that people don't feel that level of comfort to not doing any more than what's been done. Um, any speakers against? There being none, I've put the motion. Those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. Thirteen point, thirteen point three is our acceptable requests priority guideline. A mover and seconded for that, thanks. Move councillor Mitchell, second to councillor Talty. Would you like to speak to it, councillor Mitchell?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, very briefly. Uh, the, the why is of today is to adopt the updated acceptable request guideline, or the what, sorry, in the attachment. Uh, but the why is probably what's important today. And the why is, uh, the benefits to the community. And just looking into the report, um, yeah, the cl- the clearer processing of any requests from councillors in the community, the inputs, the processing internally and then the outputs can only help the community see and feel and hear what's happening in council. It's, it is about the community. It's not about us. But this does relate to us and, and the internal processes that then, um, uh, deliver for the community. So, uh, so we're always looking for constant improvement. This is a part of it, uh, to, to give better, uh, uh, outputs and results for our community. Thank you.
Any speakers against? There being none, I've put the motion. Those in favour? Those against? Carried unanimously. Next item is thirteen point four, which is the, um, Audit and Risk Management Committee meeting sort of June eighth. Move councillor Hughes, and we've actually seen this once before, and second to councillor Mackenzie. Would you like to speak to it, councillor Hughes?
Uh, thank you very briefly, Mayor. Just, uh, with our minutes, item ten point one, ethics and integrity update, and item fourteen point one, internal audit reports issued. Behind that, just one line, internal audit reports issued, were three audits presented to the committee, uh, local laws, lease management and trade waste management. A lot of work goes in to our Audit and Risk Committee. I just, uh, thank the team for all the work that's done and, and pre- present these minutes. Thanks.
Thanks, councillor Hughes. Speaker against? I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Against? That's carried unanimously. Item thirteen point five is our meeting schedule for twenty twenty four. Moved councillor Beridge, seconded councillor Talty. Would you like to speak to it, councillor Beridge?
Uh, thank you, but I see no need to say anything on this one. And I don't need to satisfy my ego with multiple words, so I'll let it go. Thank you.
Any speakers against? They're putting, uh, I'll put the motion then. Those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. Item fourteen point one is the draft Burke Dale Community Precinct Local Government Infrastructure Designation Consultation Report. Move councillor Mitchell, second to councillor Talty. Would you like to speak to it, councillor Mitchell?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the purpose of the report today is to provide a summary of the Burke Dale Community Precinct Local Government Infrastructure Designation Consultation and outline how submissions to be addressed. So before I get to the, the recommendation and go through, um, if you're looking, uh, the community councillors look into the report summary. if you're looking, the community councillors look into the report summary of the consultation process. It's a lot of detail through there, which you can pour over at your leisure. But there are twenty-three hundred visits to the Yorsey page. So a lot of people engaged in that process, hundred and seventy-two submissions came out of that. Seven organisations, hundred and sixty-five individuals, broad range of of input, some related to the LGID and some not, but that's great. We're always happy to hear from the community on any matter. And that's always taken with the seriousness that's intended. So going to the recommendation that's before us, and I'll start point three, thank the community for its participation in the consultation. So that's fantastic. We have great engagement, as we did through the V C P process itself. So this is another step down that path. Also noting today that after this engagement and the recommendations will come from it, the officers will continue to progress amendments to the V C P LGID based on the consultation report, which is before us today. And in the future, the report's seen some council endorsement on that LGID will be brought back to a future meeting of council. So today we're talking about consultation, responding to the community, adjusting, and then a further report will come back. And the final point, put one to endorse the V C P LGID designation report summary, and of course, and including the responses to submissions, which we've talked about. I think everyone should understand what an LGID is by now, and I'm certainly not going to go through it too much. But this is actually about delivering another step forward, hopefully, in delivering the city's best parkland. It's about the whole Burkedale precinct. We take, it's going to allow for an integrated and streamlined approach if we eventually adopt the LGID properly, and likely superior delivery of all the planning studies, to deep dive, to deliver more efficiently and to seek the construction efficiencies. I know the presentation we had before from the the session first up, let's not bury our silver in our pieces. Let's use them and multiply them. And I think an LGID actually helps us to use what's given to us and trusted to us in an efficient way. So, and if we do eventually get this LGID over the line as a group of council after all this engagement, the values and aspirations of the community that have followed this whole process, that will be honoured even more greatly and it will assist us in honouring that intent where the rubber hits the road and the machines start to roll. So, yeah, noting again that it is about the engagement process today, that a report will be coming back to us. But I'm excited to just another step along in delivering the city's best parkland and that whole precinct. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Mitchell, speaker against councillor Bishop?
I've got some questions.
Speakers against? No speakers against? Well, I'm giving the opportunity of speakers against before we go to questions, and I won't be coming back to the speakers against, so.
I'd like to ask some questions and then reserve my right to speak.
Sure. Just be aware, though, it doesn't actually give you double the time. Understanding orders, so just go.
Okay, I would like to just acknowledge that the Local Government Infrastructure Designation is a, I'm speaking against, but I might ask some questions during the process, is a departure from the normal statutory regulatory provisions. My first question, and I'd like a yes or no answer, is have there been any other stages of community consultation, statutory consultation in relation to this?
Clarification, I don't believe it is against normal processes. It's, it is a normal process, it's just a different process.
I'm just being debated, just.
Councillor, just, yeah.
So we are departing from the statutory provisions, which include the various range of existing conservation, community purposes, and the local South East Queensland Regional Plan Designation, which is rural production regional landscape and regional production. Those current zonings protect the site and are in keeping with the community's expectations of the values that they have prized highly on this site, which is for conservation, environmental preservation. And I believe that the consultation stage that we've gone through, which is only a very minimal stage on a very reduced scope, looking at technical elements to do with this local government infrastructure designation, has not given the community the opportunity to speak clearly about their views about this site. I'd like to ask a question about, there were a whole heap of reports that were missing from the website. Can I ask why those were not available for consultation? Stop the clock.
Through you, Madam Mayor, thank you councillor, for, to answer your first question. This is by no means a departure from a normal process at all. In fact, it's a standard part of the Planning Act, it's just one that Redland City Council's not elected to use before. It almost mirrors the ministerial infrastructure designation process that you'd all be very familiar with. In fact, you have an item today that you're discussing, which is exactly a proponent looking to use that process to undertake their approvals. It's just a different mechanic, it's by no means a departure, for absolute clarity. It's a part of the act. It says, we have not as a council elected to use it before now. In terms of your second question, we provided the documentation that we believe the public needed to access to reasonably understand the components of the LGID and specifically how they will be regulated and applied on the site. There was some additional technical studies that were ultimately summarised in an overarching environmental study that pulled that information through and synthesised it into a single report. That report was made available. We didn't believe that the additional technical studies were required to, for the community to understand the specifics of the LGID, because we're not re-prosecuting the master plan or the uses on the site. This is about how those uses, as previously, as a decision of council, will be enacted on the site. So that's the key difference in this LGID process. We are simply taking through council's decision to endorse the master plan for the site, bringing that through in a planning form and syncing all of that information together. So it was our office's view that that additional level of information wasn't required to substantively assess the LGID and its mechanics of how it's going to be applied on the site.
Thank you. It was specifically raised by residents who were looking specifically for ecological matters of significance to be identified in the appendix reports, which were not attached. And that's a concern, it's a concern I like to register. I don't think that's actually sufficient. The matters of environmental and conservation and biodiversity on this site are of absolutely extreme importance to our community. For them to not to be there in the report, and the only statutory consultation phase that this community, this council has afforded our community is, I think, a gross failure to actually acknowledge the community's expectations, in my view.
Wait, just a bit, before we go, can I just remind members of the public that you're not to record this meeting? Thank you, just, thank you, carry on.
Okay, in terms of the summary documents, yes, two thousand three hundred people came to the website. In the report, it suggests that that's considered tacit endorsement of the views of the Burkedale, of the LGID, which is erroneous, and I have clarified that that is not being recorded in that manner, which is good. But the numbers of people who did make submissions, seven to one voted against endorsing this LGID. The community do not want this LGID, they want to stick with the current planning provisions that we have. They do not want the extra burden of the proposed Whitewater Rafting Centre, which is the substantive change from normal expected, anticipated planning environment expectations and also communities' expectations. The decision on the first of April twenty twenty-one for this council to choose to put that there in the middle of our consultation phase, we were asking the community to imagine, was a shock. And I'm concerned that the groundwork, without having hydrological studies and groundwater studies completed, and they have not been yet, and I would like to recommend strongly, as various reports and submissions did, that we get groundwater studies done across the whole site. Because what's likely to happen when this LGID is enacted.
Point of view, Madam Mayor. I appreciate you've offered a lot of leeway, but the council's not speaking to the motion, seven, six, seven.
Councillor, we're talking to the consultation report, so.
We are speaking to the consultation report. There were two items, I know of specifically, that were asking for groundwater studies that have not been conducted.
Part of the consultation?
It's part of the consultation, it's not, it is missing from the consultation report. Groundwater is not referred to and needs to be rectified and needs to have site-wide studies to look at hydrology, geohydrology and aquifer flows across the area. The community are looking for us councillors to listen to their expressed needs for us to reduce the footprint on this place. They are not looking for us to have the size and scale of what was proposed. I was the only councillor who initially voted not to support the Whitewater Rafting facility, and I maintain that view. I'm concerned that there is no further statutory consultation phase for our community to guide us and advise us as to what they want to see on this site. And it's now up to council officers' interpretation and councillors' interpretation of what they want to see. There are some tremendous things to do with the master plan, and there are some great things that I want to see upheld. And I think the LGID could provide some good benefits, but to not have those things available to the community during the consultation phase is a failure in my part, from my opinion. And I think we would need to rectify that if we are to proceed with an LGID. Thank you.
Any speakers for? There being none, you have a question councillor Gollay?
Thanks, Madam Chair, through you two officers, noting councillor Bishop's quite passionate speech there. Councillor, are you, are you, through the chair, are you reprimanding us as councillors? Or are you reprimanding the officers? I'm trying to get an establishment, because we've had, it's been years since that consultation.
Question councillor please.
Well, that's my question.
Okay, so.
Where is this passion being directed to? Because there's actually been years now since the consultation, and I would have invited a motion if there needed to be a change. So can officers just address this?
I'll get the officers to respond, because. Councillors, I'll get the officers to respond. Councillor Gollay, feel happy for the officers to respond, because obviously.
Was that a question to me?
We elected to go, we elected to go to an LGID process. So I might just get the officers to outline that.
Well, it's, thanks very much, it's more about the fact that what councillor Bishop is suggesting, that we have failed somewhere. Have we failed somewhere? Can officers articulate what that failure was and why didn't we achieve what councillor Bishop this outing?
So, thank you councillor.
Can I respond?
No councillor, I'm directing it to the officers, it was actually redirected to the officers. So Chris, would you mind responding on the process that has brought us to this particular report?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I probably don't understand clear on the exact nature of the question, but happy to respond to, there was a range of issues that councillor Bishop raised. If the question or accusations around failure in the part around missing reports, our position remains that as officers all around many projects across the council, we undertake a large degree of technical studies to ensure that we do all of our processes and checks and balances along the way. We are, though, in this specific instance, a range of technical studies, and some of those were fieldwork analysis, some of them not as standalone studies, all formed part of an overarching, if you want to think about it like an environmental impact assessment, there's an overarching environmental summary report that included all of the technical information from these five or six subordinate reports. We didn't believe that the subordinate reports were required, because they're summarized, they're summarized and articulated within the overarching report. So I definitely don't believe that we have failed to provide the sufficient information for the community to understand the aspects of the LGID as moving forward. So no, I don't agree with the assertion that was made earlier.
If I have further questions, I've asked councillor Mitchell. Councillor Gollay have a question?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, no, my question was on page two hundred and fifty-seven or page twenty-one of the report. The attached report from Jacobs. I was just concerned, because it says it can be assumed that the remaining two thousand one hundred and twenty-eight visitors that did engage with the LGID Yorsey support the LGID because they didn't put in a submission. I think it's a bit naive of us to say that.
Your question councillor?
My question is who did that assumption? Because I've got a totally different assumption as to why those people might not have put in.
That's right, thank you councillor, through you, Madam Mayor. Look, that is a comment that officers made. I accept that that perhaps is not the wisest comment that we made, and I'm happy to have that specific statement removed from the report if you believe that's creating any confusion or misunderstanding, so.
Yeah, I just think to say that someone assumed that because they didn't put in an assumption is because they agreed with it, a submission, that's what someone's assumed. I would assume because they're totally tired of fighting for what they want, and that might be why they didn't do it. So you've got.
You have further questions? Further questions?
No, I just wanted to say that.
Well councillor, you had an opportunity.
No, it's something that's been raised since that time. A comment that was said that the rest of us, other than councillor Bishop, voted in favour of the Whitewater facility.
Not to do with this item, councillor.
No, but it's been said publicly.
Yeah, that's okay, we'll come, you'll have another opportunity to speak to that in the next item.
Okay, thank you. Well, it was just that assumption, Chris, I don't think it's good that you have the word assumption in there when we can all have different assumptions.
Thank you. Question councillor Beridge?
Thank you, I'd like to raise a question for something that councillor Bishop also said. In the special meeting on the first of April twenty twenty-one, it's my understanding that it was necessary to support the motion to move the project to the next level to satisfy the request of councillors for a business.
Councillor Beridge, is that correct? Councillor Beridge, you're not talking to the item, that has nothing to do with this.
I've got a question that was raised from the item.
No councillor, that decision, which was the ten-one decision, was to sign the deed, has nothing to do with the Burkedale Community Precinct.
I'd just like clarity on the understanding of what we voted on.
Well, that's not, councillor, you can talk about that at the next item potentially, but that is not what we're talking about now. We're talking about the consultation on the broader Burkedale Community Precinct LGID, which includes everything from Willard's Farm.
Can I be assured of having that raised in the next item to speak? Because you'll probably cut me off, because you'll say my time's up.
Councillor, that is inappropriate conduct in this meeting.
Well, I'm sorry, I just want to be able to speak.
That's right, well, you have the standing orders that are adopted, and we asked you to live by those. And with that councillor, that question, if you have another question regarding the consultation piece on the LGID, I'm going to move back to sum up. Councillor Mitchell, you can sum up, thanks.
Again, I thank the community for their input into the consultation process, noting a report regarding an LGID will come back, and I personally look forward to hopefully endorsing that to bring forward Australia's, maybe Australia's, but certainly our city's best parkland.
I'll put the motion councillors, those in favour? Those against? Those in favour, councillor Mitchell, councillor Gollay, councillor Edwards, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Williams, those against councillor Bhaglari, councillor Hewlett, councillor Beridge, councillor Bishop. That's carried, thank you. The next item is item fourteen point two, move councillor Talty, seconded councillor Mitchell. Would you like to speak to it, councillor Talty?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, just briefly. This is an item which speaks to the delivery partnering arrangements between council and the state government in regard to the Olympic venue that we have supported and that we bid on originally when we were looking to have a participation in our city for the twenty thirty-two Olympics. In my mind, this is an integral part of the next step towards the matters that we've just been discussing of the overall fantastic precinct that we are working to design. And this is really just an item for noting, but it's noting the steps that we have and are committed to with regard to bringing all of this to fruition over the next nine years or so. So it is just to make very clear that, you know, there will be a requirement to commit as a junior games partner and to work with the Olympic and Paralympic Games organisers in order to make sure that that particular element of the games goes well. And I certainly support that, and I believe that that our community in nine years' time will thank us very much for this. It also notes that we will need to provide sufficient funding to meet our obligations under that understanding and arrangement. And we all knew that, we knew that from the start. We don't know exactly what that means yet, but we believe that it will be the right thing to do and to authorize our chief executive officer to manage the existing delivery partner deed and negotiate executive arrangements and agreements as required to continue down that path. We have been provided quite a significant amount of information. And as the process moves forward, a lot of that information will come into the public realm. But I am certainly very happy and very satisfied that we have. But I am certainly very happy and very satisfied that we have been provided sufficient information to. Move, move forward in a calm and confident manner, that this is the right thing both for our city. And for the council also as an organisation that has to deliver these things. And and I think that history will judge us well for moving forward on this. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Talty, councillor Bishop, speaker against.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh councillor Talty just did say that we don't know uh what that means yet. And in terms of elements of this um precinct, we do not know what this means. We are at a point when we are making a commitment to delivery partner agreements and we have not yet identified.
Be clear, Paul, councillor Bishop, sorry, we actually made that agreement in twenty twenty one, just to be clear.
Yeah, and that agreement has attached to it an expectation among councillors that we would have costs. A proportioned costs associated with what we were going to be paying for at various deliverable timeframes. Um it's nice to know that in future it will all be delivered, but it's the residents who are going to pay. They'll be paying in terms of taxes for the state government delivery of their component, and they'll be paying in terms of rates for everything else. And I think without us having had a feasibility study, am I being cut off again?
Yeah, no, you're not being cut off councillor, I'm just making sure that you don't cross the line about of um conduct. Because you have been provided information to the contrary of what you're saying.
Do you, sorry, can you ask for clarification?
Uh yes, in the regard to cost to rate pays.
Uh well, what I'm saying is we do not know what the costs are associated with the broader parcel of delivering this site. And there's an expectation that a master plan will be delivered and the component parts associated with those elements have not been provided to us with breakdown elements or high cost. Overarching elements .
Your point of order councillor.
I don't believe the councillor's speaking to the item because we're not speaking to the broader area, which is part of our master plan. We're speaking specifically to the Olympic section. And that is funded in a particular way, and I don't believe the comments that are being made. Reflect the actual item in front of us.
Can I just ask you in future?
It's, it's referred to as an integrated precinct.
Thank you. In future, please refer to standing orders and. But councillor, I just ask you once again, just to keep to the item in front of us.
I, I, I believe I'm absolutely doing that. Um councillor Talty also mentions that we can move forward in a calm and confident manner. Uh I referred to page two sixty seven of the report, uh urgency. Um we have to make this urgent decision. Why is this always so urgent? These decisions that we have to progress, and I know this is a review of a previous decision and a reendorsement, but we're being told it has to be made now. Tomorrow, the Senate inquiry is going to be handing down their preliminary findings. From a whole investigation into matters that are directly related to the affordability and the capability for people to be able to afford Olympic Games. So what's changed since April twenty twenty one? Brisbane Olympics has become a reality. Um interest rates have gone up thirteen times. The cost of living has increased exponentially. Infrastructure costs for these sorts of projects have gone through the roof. We've got housing stress, energy costs are going up, we've got global warming in El Nino. Um it's likely to lead to water shortages in South East Queensland. We've got um populations growing. And we're proposing a new build that is way outside the parameters of anything that was predicted or expected by the community. We didn't have any strategic plan for this over a long period of time leading up to this. We still haven't done the validation report. We haven't got the clear breakdown of those component parts for the separable portions of the, of the overall precinct. And the community have stated overwhelmingly and clearly that they want conservation and preservation of the site. There are elements in the master plan that are wonderful. The work that officers have done to capture that has been extraordinary. And I understand, I understand the expectation that some magic rabbit needs to be pulled out of a hat to. Help make this poor parcel of land stack up. But quite frankly, I think what's there.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Point councillor.
I think this um councillor is perhaps bringing council uh into disrepute. I think it. Uh may be contributing eight point one point one in the standards of behaviour. Um making great assumptions which have no basis and I think it's bringing uh previous decisions of this council and the. Great work that we in office have done into some disrepute.
I, I do not intend to bring the council to disrepute, so I apologize for anything that I may have said and I withdraw anything that may have done that. Um that's not my intent. My intent is to acknowledge that there's an ambitious and intent to go down a pathway. That if we had done the ecological studies that I was requesting from well before we bought this parcel of land. We would have been clearly guided that this is not the appropriate thing to have on this parcel of land and the community.
Councillors uh uh has the answer to those questions. I'm just looking for the uh for the item.
The standing orders does do, um actually does say that if it's been asked and answered, that I think that's what you're.
Has, has been asked and answered, and I believe the councillor is very aware of that, and if he needs any clarification. Perhaps a question through the chair to the officers would suffice.
I was making a point that I was asking before we purchased this land for those studies to be done, and they still were not done until various incremental stages were reached. Um so, uh. I think the, the, the zonings that we have there and the, um I don't believe we need to go down the LGID path. Uh I think I, I, I remain committed to the values on this site and I will work with officers and councillors. And I will support what ultimately becomes your um view here. There are great opportunities. Um I understand that and I will, as a local councillor, uh reflect the council's views and wishes. Um but I, I need to state that the community that I've been listening to, if I, if I saw all of these things being supported overwhelmingly by the community. I would be, my hand would be in the air in support. At this stage, I reserve judgment and I've got concerns from my community that continue to be asked. And they've never been asked, do they want to have an Olympics facility in the city? And so I'm encouraging that we, we pause and we get a financial business case, we consider what's essential. Uh we, we consider what's affordable, what's best, and we work together with other state governments, the state government, federal government and the community. And we design a statutory process as a co-design. So that we can actually work together and make sure that we don't have this political uncertainty about whether we should or should not have proceeded down this pathway. I know we're here now. I'm surprised that we've got to this point and ultimately, um uh. I think the concerns in the community are, are clear and the voice is not being listened to in a way that. Uh I think is really picking up on, on their views. And I think we should go back to them and ask them, do they want to proceed with this? Process, and I think we should take the time to do that rather than proceeding now to make this commitment. I think um i- if, if the balance of the council and the state government and the federal government's agreement is that this is the best thing and the community supports that. I'm absolutely happy to support. At this stage, I reserve my judgment. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Bishop. Councillor Gollum, can you speak before?
Uh Madam Chair and colleagues, um based on what councillor Bishop has just expressed then. I think some of his questions need to go to uh the state members for a start. Um. If you can bear with me, I, I, I've made a few points here because uh as we were, Madam Mayor, as an independent councillor, I've asked some. Very tough questions over the past months in relation to this matter. I've conversed with the premier's office many times, whose stance has been they are building the Whitewater facility at Burke Dale and that is that. And I'll just say that again, that's straight from the premier's office. So I've contacted them five times, I've spoken to their representatives five times. And each time they have been absolutely concrete that that's where it's going, they're paying for it, they're building it, et cetera, et cetera. I've lodged submissions over time in writing, uh especially to the Senate Oversight Committee. Uh through Senator Canavan's office. Um. And I refer to the council ten one vote in favour, conducted in April twenty twenty one. Confirming and sealing support for the Olympic site and stakeholder agreements making this project of the state a done deal. I would like to thank the officers for their responses to my concerns. I would also like to thank my colleagues, especially councillor Bishop and councillor Boglari for their input and frank discussions. And, and their discussions with me have been invaluable. I believe you've helped me make my decision today, together with other robust information to hand that I'm not at liberty to discuss. My concerns overall reflected that I had not been provided enough financial data. An understanding of the assumptions underpinning the expectations. That the Whitewater resilience rafting and recreation assets could be self-sustaining. It would not be an undue burden on our rate payers. Seeking information from Penrith Council, I requested that the Penrith Council provide all Redlands councillors with a brief on the benefits. Penrith has experienced, and it's my understanding that brief is coming, and I believe this brief will dispel speculation. I felt it was my duty to make every effort to ensure as much as possible. That this was the right thing for our city as well as the state, the country and the Olympic movement. Not to mention our young people and the future rate payers, as I'm sure all of us do in this chamber. My concerns were based on a number of factors to include environmental, financial and social impacts. And more importantly, state reps have been sending mixed messages throughout the community published in the media. This, these publications have created confusion, and so I've actually taken on board the information that they have provided me. And then I refer to uh Don Brown, um who questioned the validity originally of the Whitewater facility. Um. He was suggesting that the project via the premier's office needs to be put on hold until the next council election is over. Um but he was also in the process of supporting candidates for a local government who are, who are against the state's own project. That created a bit of confusion in the community. He then reprimanded me for not supporting the project. Um he suggested my thoughts are a conspiracy. He then went to the media and he said alongside of um Kim Richards MP.
Getting off topic here.
To congratulate, to congratulate Mayor Williams for bringing the Olympics to the Redlands.
Point of order. What is your point of order councillor?
I haven't got the number because I'm not a point of order champion, but um surely this is off topic.
Well, it's not because I.
Seven, six, seven, thank you.
Councillor Gollum, just get you to speak.
Yeah, so to the community, I've, I've spoken to business people and more importantly. You and my concerns have been somewhat delayed and I'm more confident at this early stage. That every measure has been taken and considered and I'm pleased to now support this next step in the process moving forward. I urge the councillors and the community to move forward together. Uh and I won't be afraid to continue asking you questions as the matters progress. So I'm happy to support this report today. Thank you.
Councillor Beridge, speaker against?
Yes, thank you. Um I've, I've got a couple of points, so I'd like to get through, thanks. Um. Bishop, oh sorry, councillor Bishop asked what's changed since April twenty twenty one. And my first thought was that competing against the Whitewater at Burke Dale will be two new surf parks. The first surf park is at the Glass House Mountains and that will be one and a quarter hours from Burke Dale Whitewater Centre. And that will open in twenty twenty five.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, there's no surf parks in this report. This is not speaking to the item.
Um, please .
The item, thanks.
Please, thank you. I, I think everyone else gets a fair go. Uh Siney Capital is also one and a quarter, just over one and a quarter hours from uh. From the Burke Dale Water Site at Glenview. And the Sunshine News quoted in June that the Surf Parks Australia.
Councillor Beridge, we are not building a surf park.
Okay.
Completely different venue, so.
Well.
Go to your next point.
All right, so the park will have a wave pool with breaking waves for beginners and experts.
Councillor Beridge, that is incorrect also.
Okay, well, can I please get to this? Because what I'm trying to show is this is what we are competing against.
Greatest respect however, you need to make sure that you're being, not misleading the public by stating things that aren't happening and they're not.
This, this is straight out of the Sunshine News, uh in June .
We are not building a wave pool.
Right, well, we, we are attracting people here through tourism, correct? That is correct. We are, the, the whole impetus of this is to attract tourism. So we, before, what has changed since April twenty twenty one? Is that in the Sunshine Coast, we are now competing with a resort pool, surf pools, amphitheater pool. And a restaurant. And if that's not enough, they've also got a family resort with a hundred and sixty villas. So I have a very concern that a business case process. Could compare the competition and should compare the competition, critically examine the opportunities. Alternatives and financial investment to recommend the best course of action with strategic context. As well as a financial case and clearly communicate the business value. I have asked why we still have not seen the true actual business case document with the business investment logic.
So coun- councillor, that has been provided confidentially to you, just to be clear.
I have not seen a business case document. I have been advised facts and figures, but I have not seen the document .
Madam Mayor, councillors were advised in regard to when the business case would be provided and this has been answered.
Yeah, I have not seen the document. So our responsibilities as a councillor clearly state in the act, we have, we must critically examine the rationale. Of all our council decision making and we can't just sign off on this because it's something that we think people might want to go to. The next council will have to wear the burden of this legacy if we don't do our due diligence. And I just want to make one other comment. And I wasn't going to say this until councillor Gollum said that he'd made multiple inquiries with the state. He, I, I think we must talk to different people because I made inquiries with the state office yesterday. And the feedback I received was that this will not be further action until after the elections when we have a new council. So I think to just say, I called and I wrote and I did and, and he said and I did this and, and I got this. It's all hearsay because I got the opposite .
Chair speaks, you need to stop so that I can actually make sure that you don't get out of line um and attract a conduct issue. So please, that's, please, that is um information that is not being verified by anyone.
Well.
And we, and I yesterday, by the way, met with a representative from the uh, the Olympic. Coordination Group, and that is not what we are being told, so.
I was told that at four thirty yesterday after three phone calls, so.
Um you'll get them.
I'm not going to lie about it, but what I'm saying is I wasn't even going to mention this until. Other councillors allowed to say, but I've done this and I went to that and I exposed this .
Councillor Beridge, that, that is inappropriate conduct at a meeting because you are being disrespectful to other.
No, it is what was said .
I'm going to ask Tony in regards to our standing orders and the code of conduct when you're dealing with inappropriate conduct at a meeting. And you have crossed the line.
Really, I've crossed the line.
Councillors, the code of conduct and our standing orders are clear about how you conduct yourselves in these meetings. Being disrespectful to other councillors is, is a breach. So if you want to turn to your standing orders. If a chairperson decides unsuitable meeting conduct has occurred, but it's of, and it's of a less serious nature. Which I'm assuming that we're at this point, and I've never had to pull this card before, but it's becoming obvious I'll need to pull it more often. The chairperson may request the council to take remedial actions such as ceasing the unsuitable meeting conduct and refraining from exhibiting that conduct. So I ask you now to stop being disrespectful to other councillors and their views, and I ask you then to continue, because you are running out of time. Um and I'd ask you to withdraw your comments, if you would, about other councillors, please.
Can I ask what the comment is that I have to withdraw because I don't know what it was?
Well, I just think, uh thank, withdrawing, just withdraw your comment in regards to councillor Gollum.
If I have um insulted councillor Gollum, then I apologize. If I have said anything that was not true, I would stand corrected. And I have no intent to um, to upset the meeting. Standing orders, is that?
Okay, thanks, perfect. Okay. Um I was a speaker against, we have a speaker for. Councillor Boglari, you have a question, I take it then? Your question? Please make it a question.
I presume I'm not allowed to clarify anything?
You can clarify by asking a question, yes.
Okay, I um, I just wanted to ask, um what, before we sign this, my concern is. We don't have that validation report. Um I, I presume the information that we have had recently. Um still stands that it is due at the end of this year, and in that validation report, we're going to get the costings. Um a couple of councillors, councillor Talty and councillor Bishop, have both noted this fact today that we don't have the costs. Um is this correct that the validation report with the costs will be coming? Will be public for councils to have at the end of this year?
It'll, yeah, I'll get Chris to, uh, it was explained to you when it's gone through the various cabinet processes.
Yeah, and we, is it correct we're still expecting it this year, at the end of the year?
Uh, potentially not. Uh, sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, thanks for the question. Um, look, the reality is we're not, uh, that timeframe is not ours to, to control and judge. Um, I think the timeframe that was put to you indicated that there was likely to be, um, a decision by the Queensland Government on investment in the back half of this year. I'm not, couldn't tell you that. Um, the information, however, will still remain cabinet and conference until the other levels of government have completed their parts and processes. So. Uh, it could be that the federal government, as an example, takes longer than that. Um, it's a separate process. So until all levels of government have made. Uh, their decision around investment, the information might be made public. Um, council may, um, be in a position to receive further briefings and, and. Probably provide with a copy of that information in a confidential kind of context. Um, but at this stage, I couldn't, um, make a commitment to you one way or another because that's again, it's, it's actually the state's document, their process. But I would reasonably imagine that we would be provided with a fulsome copy of that, um, as part of the, on its way through the process.
So, so my second question would be, why, why the rush to have this today? And why aren't we, in, in my opinion, being a bit more diligent? Um, and waiting till we have some sort of validation report on the costings and like a business study on this to base decisions.
It is, it is covered in the report, but I'll get Chris to reiterate that.
Because what we have not received to date, that information.
No, uh, yeah, Chris will, it's, the urgency element is in, in the report, but I'll get Chris to.
I can't see the state pushing us on this.
Uh, bearing in mind, um, we've already made this decision. So councillor, I'll just get Chris to respond to your question about urgency.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so the, essentially what the, the state is asking us and what we are asking you is then. It relates to the interdependent pieces of infrastructure. It actually doesn't relate to the whitewater. The state and federal government will be delivering that. Uh, should they make that ultimate investment decision. What the state is seeking from us is just a reaffirmation. Specifically relates to our infrastructure delivery programme over the next couple of years to ensure that. We will deliver the parts of the Berkdale precinct. It is an integrated precinct, as a few councillors have noted here, uh, that has some interdependencies. Um. That's what I'm sure.
Enabling infrastructure for it.
Those are elements of them, for sure, councillor. Um, to make sure that we will deliver those enabling infrastructure or the pieces of interdependent infrastructure. On a timeline that matches the ultimate delivery programme that the state will undertake. So they wanna essentially make sure that by the time the venue is ready. That you can access it via a car, there's water there when the taps, um, be turned on, um, and the power's there, et cetera. So the elements that council is responsible for delivering as part of the, in, in acting the rest of the Berkdale precinct. That ultimately serve to provide access and services to that venue are our responsibilities to deliver and have always been. Um, they're just wanting to ensure that now that they have further information on their delivery programmes and their timeframes that our programmes align with their programmes. Is essentially the heart of the question, um, and the specific nature of, uh, point three, which is the request to the C E O. To ultimately to negotiate or to make those commitments more fulsomely when we have details of the programmes, um, n- nothing to do with the whitewater, I would suggest.
Yeah, thank you. Um, they. Um, have no word, it is a question. Um, in twenty twenty one. Um, we're saying that we agreed to this and I voted back then in, in favour of moving forward. Um, I voted in a spirit of trust and collaboration because on that day councillors were. Um, given information and it was my understanding we had to agree to that. But we wouldn't be moving forward until we got that validation report. So has the validation and, and costings, and at that time we could decide whether to go forward or not, which is why I agreed though.
A question, but I'm happy for officers to just maybe outline.
Well, there's several councillors in the room that were under that assumption and that's why we voted for it.
The report is a confidential report and the, the, the recommendation is there and councillors will be obliged to, um, take. Note of the report that you're voting on before you support it and that's what's on record. So I just, I'll, I'll have officers maybe explain, um, without.
So were we, well, I'm thinking that we might have been expecting, um, this validation report earlier before we got to this point. Has, has that change happened? Because otherwise I wouldn't have voted in twenty twenty one if I'd known that lock disease.
That wasn't, that didn't form part of the decision council made. That, the decision, and I'll go back to the deed, just to be clear. The decision that ten councillors made, it's a majority decision. There was a couple of items, um, in the recommendation which read. To note the urgency of the request by the state for council to enter into a delivery partner guaranteed deed. To endorse its commitment and support to the election of Brisbane, Queensland as the host city of the Games. To endorse council executing the delivery partner guarantee deed and any associated documents. To authorize the chief executive officer acting on advice from the general council to negotiate, execute. And manage the delivery partner guarantee deed and any associated documents on council's behalf. That this report and its attachments remain confidential until the contracts are finalized and details published in accordance with the legislative requirements. Subject to maintaining the confidential, confidentiality of legally pre-privileged, private and commercial and confidence information. That is what ten councillors voted for, you know.
Yeah, regrettably now, and unfortunately, the information given to us and the discussions had, aren't able to be read out. But, uh, the question is, um, the Gold Coast, they were going to have the Gulf down at Royal Pines. And it's been moved to Brisbane after a deed agreement was signed. Is that correct? So just because the agreement is there, um, doesn't lock it in stone?
I'm, I'm not aware.
Um, I just wanted to, if I could, um, if this motion does happen to go down. Um, there was a alternate motion circulated yesterday. I believe there was some wording in it which officers feel may get. Um, not acceptable.
Councillor, let's test the room first.
So I have changed that wording to make it perhaps, in my opinion, acceptable and I'm happy to move an alternate motion.
If, yeah, we'll, we'll see if we get to that point. Um, councillor. Thank you. Councillor Mitchell, and I, I will be seeking some legal advice on that before you make that a public statement. Because we know that this spins confidentiality, confidentiality agreed by all of you, um, in recent times, um, on this particular issue. Councillor Mitchell, you have a question? Please make it a question.
Yes, I do. Through you to, um, to Officer Chris Holmes. Um, the focus from the Olympic movement. State government and council and our communities think it's been on legacy, the legacy matters, uh, relate to this. So the question is, could the officer, um, highlight, uh, the officers' interactions with the state around legacy matters? Including financial legacy that may affect council and the community.
Through you, Madam Mayor, thank you for the question. Um, and I'll, I'll endeavour to answer some of that. Like, as you would probably understand, probably more than anyone in our organisation, I have more confidential bound on me. Um, and probably have more confidential information in my head as it relates to this project. And I am not able to probably fulsomely share all of that because it is still part of an ongoing process as it relates to. The state government's project validation report, but I am confident, uh, when that process is completed and when the full report is released. Which will include a public facing, uh, version of that document for all of the community to understand that they will see. Uh, the significant and long legacy that this venue will provide to our community. Um, it will provide a significant legacy, both, uh, from disaster resilience training perspective. An opportunity for us to position ourselves, uh, in the world for unique facilities we provide. But importantly, um, provide our youth with some, you know, amazing facilities that they can access. Um. We have a lo- a number of groups who provide services in those areas who are really excited by the nature of the venue and how it can be used. Um, as part of school programmes, as part of youth programmes. So the, the venue, I think, i- is unfairly tarnished or thought of as being an elite sport venue. Um, and that is certainly an aspect of it, but it is far more than that. In fact, the vast majority of it is the complete opposite of that. Um, the proportion of time that it will be used in elite mode, if you want to think about it that way, um, would be a, a small fraction. Uh, of its theoretical ultimate capacity. So, um, the legacy outcomes and opportunities here from disaster, from our youth, does, defensive swimming. Um, we have been invited, uh, on behalf of, uh, the World International Surf Lifesaving Association. To present at the World Anti-Drowning Conference in, in Perth at the end of the year. Because they can see the tangible opportunities that this venue can provide, um, to teach people how to swim defensively in moving water to replicate, um, things like rips. So there's opportunities, uh, given our coastal nature, um, and all the South East Queensland provide services like that. And then in due course, um, as I'm on record of saying, when we debated the master plan or you debated it rather in March of this year, um. The independent financial work that council officers have done, um, I believe remains, um, consistent and valid and hasn't changed throughout this entire process. Um, and that affirmed that at that time, uh, it remains my view that this project can and will, um, certainly break even. And if not be profit generating, um, for our, our residents and ultimately generate a benefit, um, back to the ratepayers in a financial sense as a legacy as well. Thank you, councillor, for the question.
Before I hand to sum up to, um, councillor Talty, I just wanted to add that, um, the, the Olympic Games model. Um, requires us to go through, uh, the commitment made by the state to, um, to the I O C. Is all around the legacy, um, and not having, um, a financial burden when necessary, um, when not necessary. And the project validation process, is it doing exactly that? So the fact is, if it doesn't stack up through the state nor the federal government, it won't happen. That is what that process is all about. So as much as you feel that we all have to have all of that detail right now. The fact is that is exactly what they're determining at the moment. That's what a project validation report is. So I just wanted to make, make, I'm not taking any more questions, councillors. We've, we've debated this number of times. I, I'm just suggesting that that is, just to make you understand that there's been a commitment made by the state and the federal government. In regards to legacy in this space. Councillor Talty, would you like to sum up? Thanks.
Madam Mayor, only in that I believe that councillors have been provided ample information in order to reaffirm their commitment to this process. And I absolutely believe that those legacy, um, items will be further interrogated. And will be brought forward for our community. And in order to have that happen, we need to continue on this path. So I, uh, urge councillors to support the process. Thank you.
Councillors, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Those against? Those in favour, councillor Mitchell, councillor Gole, councillor Edwards, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Williams. Those against councillor Boglari, councillor Hewlett, councillor Berry and councillor Bishop. Thank you, councillors. Moving on, if I may, to the civic support fund guideline, uh, item fifteen point one, move councillor Hughes. Seconded councillor Mackenzie. Councillor Hughes, would you like to speak to it?
Delighted. Thank you, Mayor. The civic support fund guideline is the heading, but behind the heading. Is five hundred thousand dollars that council has set aside at our, uh, last budget. To help our community with a hand up. We are not here for a handout. We are here to support our community as we know that times are very tough for some of our families with a hand up. If we go through to the guideline very quickly on page, I had it here. Uh, page five of eleven or two hundred and eighty two. Uh, the eligible proj- projects summed up here are quick response grants up to five thousand dollars. To support community organisations to deliver short term responses to immediate cost of living needs. Minor grants up to twenty thousand dollars. Funding to support community organisations to respond to community priorities emerging from cost of living pressures. And major grants up to fifty thousand dollars. Funding for community organisations to deliver large scale or long term initiatives. Which address cost of living needs and provide benefits for Redlands residents. These monies will be set out via grants, strict guidelines with, that are here. Drill down to the detail. This is for our community to support our community. And I thank everyone that's behind the scenes for this, just recently joining Vinnie's and helping in Alexandra Hills deliver food parcels. The need is out there and how we support our community. This is a major, a, a step. It is only a twelve month program. I think we need to highlight that. Um, we're seeing the schools, uh, more and more being funded. For breakfast programs, the Y M C A are delivering a, a state school brekkie program. Uh, I think probably just about every one of us councillors have been out there buttering toast recently. Our, our community does have some real pinch points of need. Thank you.
Speaker against? Councillor Edwards, speaker against.
Thank you. This is really hard for me because I think, I know there's a lot of people out there hurting. And half a million dollars will go somewhere, but it might go enough. My, my concern is really on, on what is the role of local government and. Look, this, this should be a state and federal, uh, proposal to funding issue. They've got lots, so much more money than us. We're really just dependent on our ratepayers. And, and my concern is that if we, what if we, we put our foot on this sticky pavement. Then, then we, we might not be able to get off it in twelve months' time. I'm concerned that we might be painted in a corner by federal and state government saying. Go to seek a council because they can do those things. Um, we got out of doing, uh, vaccinations for the community. And we had childcare and we got out of those because they were all cost to us and we're trying to drive it down. Um, I'd rather see that half a million dollars carried forward to say next year's budget to put a, reduce the cost of living pressure on our ratepayers. Um, yeah, I'm not, I'm not against, I can see the benefit of this, but I think I would rather, and I know it's too late now. Make all our existing grant funding we do in council. So for one, one year, okay, we're just gonna focus that. On ways to help people. But, um, uh, as much as I'd like to support it, I don't, I really think that that's not our role. That's not our role.
Thanks, councillor Edwards. Speak for councillor Bishop, you want to speak for or not?
Uh, I'd, I'd like to acknowledge that, uh, those very important, uh, considerations that councillor Edwards has raised are. Absolutely critical, um, for us to bear in mind. Uh, and I'd like to just acknowledge that when this was initially proposed, it was to do with a, uh. Reappropriation of some funds as a result of a carryover. I note that we have got some significant costs coming up.
But it wasn't as a result of a carryover. It was, it was.
It was a consideration. Oh, okay.
Sorry, I keep, I just, it wa- just to be clear, that, I did just to clear this budget decision, um, and it, it wasn't carryover, but I just get that clarified if that's, if that's okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Bishop, for, um, raising the point. We met, you may recall councillors met just after the June, um, R B A meeting. When the cash rate, um, overnight rate was increased, the interest rate was increased. And councillors, as part of the budget deliberations, determined that because the cash balances would attract more interest revenue. That was an opportunity to then, um, support the community through what you deemed at that time, um, the civic support fund.
Thank you for that clarification. Uh, and I, I note that when we did discuss this, um. My strong recommendation was that we should be talking to our officers and our officers should be talking to the sector. And that has duly occurred. And, um, this is the information that's come back. I still do maintain some real concerns and I find myself on, on a precipice with regards to this decision. Because, uh, one of the things that the report does talk about is, um, duplication and a very clear desire to avoid duplication. I think to councillor Edwards' point, we need to be very clear as to where the parameters are ending. And the state and federal, um, departments and where we might be potentially likely to stick our foot on the sticky paper and start taking that up. I'm really concerned about that. I'm also really concerned about people perceiving this as a new opportunity to solve issues that are actually really not council's. Problem, uh, and, and I have got some concerns about that going forward. My recommendation is that we should, um, pause this process, uh, seek some more information and, and come back, um, to have a. I am speaking to it. I'm saying, I'm, I'm acknowledging that I'm, I've got some real, um, prevaricating concerns. That I hope could be allayed by us actually taking a little bit of extra time to see where this might actually benefit. Um, our community best and avoid us getting into a situation where we sa- raise an expectation that we. Are gonna be, um, required to fund next year because I know going forward, we've got some big costs ahead of us.
Speaker against? Councillor Talty?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Similarly to councillor Edwards, um, I, I did support us going out. Uh, by the offices to look at how we could use those funds in support of the community post-COVID. Given the pressures within the community and cost of living. Uh, I won't be supporting this because it isn't what I was expecting. Would be a path that local government would take. Um, those concerns about cost shifting and what is responsibility of state versus local government, et cetera, uh, at, at the basis of that. Um. I know it's difficult when local government is trying to find ways to support the community. Um, but, and, and further to that, uh, uh, if this goes ahead today. I certainly would hope that those organisations that benefit from applying for these grants. Understand that it is a one-off. It, it was an opportunity when funds became available. And it will not be, as far as I understand, a recurring situation. Um. It's, yeah, it, I, I would have, when we first looked at it, I was. It's, yeah, it, I I would have, when we first looked at it, I was hopeful that we could look at easing the the burden. Uh for those people who are doing it really tough and finding it difficult to meet their bills. Um particularly their rates bills, their water bills and so forth, um. But I don't see this as the answer to that, so I won't be supporting it today. Thank you.
Speaker for councillor Boglari?
Uh thank you, um you know, I I agree that there is a lot of cost shifting onto council. But it's not the first time council has stood up in this area. Um recently, we put seventeen million dollars into the Simbi ferry terminals. Because that previously was a state government um domain, but we wanted to. Yeah, but we've taken them over now as well to make sure that our community had safe travel um ferry terminals. So we do step up when we're needed and unfortunately, yes, it is another um. Step for our ratepayers to have to do. Um but we've also gone out on a media release around budget time about this. So I think if it doesn't get up today, we'll keep talking about reputational damage and all the other um reports. Uh we would also have reputational damage on this one. I'm hoping, knowing as councillor Hughes pointed out, the number of charities, um our churches. Our various organisations from Rotary to Night Ninjas, um Salvation Army, everyone is doing their damnedest to help our. Community at the moment. A one-off five hundred thousand to help them at this crucial time, I will support.
Speaker against councillor Beridge?
Uh thank you, I agree a hundred percent with what councillor Edwards said, I do, I. I think we do have to question what is the role of local government, good question. Uh we're talking half a million dollars of ratepayer funding in a time when it's very, very difficult and we're having very high rates. This is a very generous handout. Uh I do not see this as reputational damage if we go out now. After having discussed it, I'm pleased it was brought to us, I I agree with what councillor Talty said. That um it was worth a discussion, we have now discussed it. And I think uh that it, this could be used in other areas across the se- uh across the city. And um I agree a hundred percent with Mark Edwards, thank you.
Speaker for councillor Mitchell, and you have a question councillor Mackenzie?
Very briefly, I think we're all teetering on a knife's edge on this with all wanting the great benefits and wanting to help our community. But not wanting to um have this end up being a council responsibility in the future, so. I will be supporting it today, but I appreciate all the comments here and uh would like to signal that um. Uh I see this as a, as a one-off for this year, um in in some extraordinary times. Um and this uh half a million dollars is no small amount of money. And that should into the future be redirected back into call council services. Um so I think we're all in furious agreement, but we'll just come down either five degrees one side of the the knife's edge or the other here. But we'll be supporting it today on those bases. Thank you.
Question councillor Mackenzie?
Yes, through you to our CFO, we do budget adjustments throughout the year. Um and I'm wondering what is the feasibility is of this five hundred thousand dollars. Being redirected from this civic fund to a more equitable discount across the city, because I understand from the budget. I think we gave, was it a wastewater discount? If I remember correctly, to to make a more equitable discount across the city. Is that possible through budget adjustment if, should this, should this not be supported today? Can that five hundred thousand dollars be redirected across the city to provide a discount on a council service that we provide through our rates?
Through you, madam chair. Thank you councillor Mackenzie for the opportunity to talk to this. And absolutely, US councillors can determine what you wish. Um to fund and not fund, the only thing is we need to comply with legislation. Which says that you can only set the rates and utility charges, which include separate charges, special charges at the special budget meeting. And you can only have one of those now per year. So you can absolutely um change that funding to something else. Um a one-off funding or something, um whatever you desire. Um we can check with legals to make sure it's compliant with the legislation. But happy to talk to that should that opportunity present itself at a budget review, which we're aiming to hold before the end of the calendar year.
Uh okay, so that was a question. Can I just um clarify a couple of things? And you know, I I acknowledge everything that's been said in regards to cost, cost shifting. Um if I can firstly just reflect on the fact that the recent councils have stepped in in the past, things like vaccination. Um things like childcare, after-school care, um is because no one was helping community in that space. Um and because of the uh the situation we find ourselves in, I think that's why after the bank actually. The Reserve Bank actually raised this money for us, not our ratepayers technically. Um so, you know, it was a bonus the day before that we um we were able to realise some extra funding, so um. I too ha- um you know, feel that we need to make sure that it's clear that it um. Isn't a duplication of other opportunities, other levels of government are providing to some of our charities. Um but we need, we'd need to also acknowledge that we're seeing um signs that in our community that means that. We should be there to to back them up um in in this, at this point in time. So um with that, um. I think you've already spoken that right. Quick question?
Yeah, I was seeking clarification to see whether we might be able to um make some adjustment and I wonder if we could. Um either take time now and and say let's take a little longer to get some feedback about how this is gonna best work. Or look at a reduced amount for the initial. Um uh it's got, I'm sorry, I I know, actually we've got officer attached to delivery of it and I think it would probably change things, it's too complicated.
My officers have put a lot of work into this.
I I just, I I would like to just, I'd just like to acknowledge that our officers in the strengthening communities department are picking up on some really important signals. And I'd like that to be ongoing, whatever happens as a result of our decision today.
There's a question through to Louise.
Uh thank you, madam mayor. And to assist councillors in your decision-making. Um I think if you are looking at delaying any activity, you need to be very mindful that the crisis is now. And any delay really doesn't respond to that urgency of need. So firstly, um that's probably a consideration. Secondly, um when council asked us to look at this opportunity to respond to need in the community. Um we've gone out, as um councillor Bishop has rightly said, and consulted with the community sector to establish. Where the need was and to also look at um providing value for that funding that's coming through. One of the requirements that was put on officers was to bring back the guideline so that you could look at that guideline and make those decisions. Um and that is a fairly operational level of information, but I'd like to draw your attention. To the section in the guideline that refers to ineligible projects and funding associations. And in that listing, it does say that ineligible projects are projects considered. The core responsibility of other levels of government. It also says project costs already supported by other levels of government are ineligible. So I thought that information may give assistance to councillors when you make your decision on this particular matter. Thank you, madam mayor.
And bearing in mind councillors, um if we, if we don't exhaust the fund, then that money will s- will stay in general revenue. And there'll be opportunities to distribute that to other areas that might require it across the organisation, so. Um thank you Louise and thank you for that question. Um any other questions? Uh back to you councillor Hughes to sum up.
Thank you, mayor, and I think um. Louise has just summed up for me beautifully because that's the notes I had on my screen. Uh the human and social support sector leaders held a workshop to identify current gaps in the services. So I think that's really important to talk about current gaps in services and opportunities for community organisations. To pro- to provide cost of living support for resident residents in need. Some of the groups we touched base with domestic and family violence, youth, children and families, ageing. Community safety and crime prevention, disability, homelessness and housing, mental health, alcohol and other drugs. And while I've been sitting here this morning, yet again, I think it happened at the last general meeting, I've had a phone call from um. Uh footprints from Hori and in need of some furniture and he's uh reached out to me again. With our connections with uh our church community and we're homing someone on Friday. How can we help that particular person? This is exactly what this is designed for, where we have gaps. We've got, we've got organisations that are funded, but there are gaps and this is about helping a hand up. Where the gaps are. Thank you.
So I'm just going to leave it at that.
On the difference between us filling gaps that are actually state responsibility, is that duplication because. I just think we need to be clear about if if we're picking up where their budget's cut off, that's a concern.
Well, I think Louise made that clear before, that that's not the case. So councillors with that, um I'll put the motion, those in favour? Those against? Those in favour, councillor Boglari, Mitchell, Gole, Hewlett, Edwards. Mackenzie, Hughes, Bishop, Williams. Those against councillor Talty and councillor Beridge. Thank you. Counts. Councillor, the next item. Councill- councillor Boglari. Want wants to move option two, as I understand it.
Yes, thank you.
Madam mayor, I just, I think I've got a conflict of interest here. Um I'm sorry to announce it so late. But referring to Hub sixty-eight, um I have declared on previous occasions that Steve Lambourne did. Was a sponsor of my wife's Redlands Community Breakfast, which however, I don't know whether I'm exonerated, I exonerate myself, a future decision.
How long ago was that councillor? How long ago was that?
Uh it's here, we haven't done any more.
Because the the legislation has changed, so if it was more than the last term. But it's your, absolutely your call, um it wasn't this term.
No.
Or last term? It's your call councillor, if you'd like to do.
I'll, I'll leave it. Thank you.
So, sorry, before you do that, you'll have to actually declare that con- conflict in in.
Um, madam mayor, in council, I wish to declare a conflict of interest, item fifteen point two. Reason being that um Steve Lambourne, who was involved with Hub sixty-eight, actually sponsored my wife's Redlands Community Breakfast some time ago. I have declared this conflict before, but I'm re-derating it again today, and so I will remove myself from the meeting.
So we could vote, we could vote on it, yeah. And I I um I I also have previously declared it, but I believe that was two terms ago, which no longer actually um means it's not valid, so. So um um you know, just so everyone's very clear and safe.
I can make a decision in the best interest.
All right, so let me, let me.
I'd like to remain.
Let me just go, let me go to where we need to be to um deal with the conflict, because firstly, I'll do a councillor Hewlett. Um who has declared what I would imagine is. Declarable.
So I'm sure with the Michael Choy also attended the breakfast, I don't know whether he went. Yeah, I know, I just, I've had four misconducts.
Madam mayor, as we're actually voting on.
Sorry councillors, but just.
No, but uh the item before us is to endorse feedback to the state on a state matter. I wouldn't have, I would have thought that that conflict was too narrow to be applied to something so broad.
Councillors, I think regardless of what everyone's view is, um the councillor has raised a conflict and we'll now go through the process. So um I'll just get into that, spare with me. Um so councillor, are you considering that to be prescribed? Or a declarable?
Declarable.
Declarable? Let's get the right one. So councillors, um with that, we'll take a vote whether you believe that councillor Hewlett has a declarable conflict of interest. Are you all with us? So sorry. Uh we'll have, we we need to have a mover and second to first in regards to that. Move councillor Bishop, second to councillor Boglari. Um those in favour? Councillor Hewlett, will you just maybe outline your declarable conflict of interest?
Declaring a conflict of interest because Steve Lambourne, who was involved at Hub sixty-eight, was a sponsor of my wife's Redlands Community Breakfast. So, previously.
Oh, okay. So councillors, stop, 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 stop. Just minute secretaries are on the job. So we have actually taken this vote before and you have been allowed to stay in the meeting for this and future meetings. So it must have been a while ago, I'd assume, and I assume that might be the same for me. I I thought we dealt with it. No, it better to be over cautious than not cautious at all. So I just, um we'll just double check. I think it might be the same for myself. I'll just pause the meeting so that we can get that sorted because I don't want to create any issues for anyone unnecessarily. Yeah, I guess so. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. You're all going. Can you not? All right, councillors. Does, why don't we, councillor, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting for? For five minutes so that you can have um a quick break and come back at eleven thirty. Move, we have got a quorum, one, two, three, four, five, yeah, we've got a quorum. Uh move councillor uh Talty, second to councillor Boglari, those in favour? Those against? We will be back at eleven thirty. It's carried. We will be back at eleven thirty. It's carried. Due meeting proceedings, please move councillor Tolty, second to councillor Edwards, those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Alright, so now we are up to item. I lost my page. Uh fifteen point two, and I believe councillor Boglari, you want to move option two with an amendment.
No, just option two.
Oh, okay.
Because the um, the officers amended the. Attachment seven for us, but after um a meeting they added another point into attachment seven and. So now we have to as.
So my question, then I think we would have to then refer to the amended attachment, right?
Um, this is the motion that the officers sent through, so I just.
Oh, yes, so that's it then. It's a. Yes, okay, so, so moved.
Okay.
So moved us in front of you then. Motion. Second to councillor Hughes. Okay, go for it councillor Boglari.
Okay, thank you. Um, I was just going to say to the um councillors. On page two of the report, it actually lists the complexity of this development and all the various aspects of it. Um, and the size and bulk can be seen in the current conceptual designs that are also included in the um report. And due to this um size of the infrastructure here, it's not just impacting locally, it's also. Uh pa- um impacting the actual area and the entrance statement like into Cleveland. I'd like to. Ask the officers if they're here. Yes, there's Michael, um through you chair, um madam chair. If I could ask the officers to actually clarify what the actual assessment process is, because there's a bit of confusion. In the community, because it is of such a large infrastructure nature. Uh, the uh propellant, the applicants have decided to go through a ministerial infrastructure designation. Which means council is not the assessing agent, but the state government is. And what council can do is a submission, just like residents can, and that is what we're voting on today. The contents of the submission that council is sending in, so our planning voice is heard. And why I'm moving option two, uh or this, this amended motion. Is because the residents have spoke, I've spoken with the residents a couple of times. And one of their points, which is the amenity impact on the neighbours to the north, on their privacy, had not been included in the submission. And after um speaking with officers the other day, they've now added that point in, so hence the um. The change. The other impacts of the traffic, the sewerage. Um, the impact on the Western Environmental Corridor, the officers have actually all included. And I would like to thank them on page sixteen, when it deals with the environmental corridor to the west. They've actually added in some extra recommendations for the development. And that was a particularly passionate point for the people who live there, because they have koalas and wallabies and. All sorts of wildlife come through there, so they were very passionate about keeping that. And also the impact on the roundabout with the traffic in Wellington and Shaw Street. So the officers have done a really thorough job on this and I, I thank them for that, but if they could just please explain the process. Um, be, for that clarification for the community and perhaps run through the submission briefly, if that's allowed. Thank you.
Michael.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's councillor Boglari summarize, this is a ministerial infrastructure designation, so the planning act. Sets out um basically um what that includes. So an infrastructure designation may be. Um, considered for development that's listed in the planning regulations, so includes education facilities, hospitals. And healthcare services and residential care facilities amongst other types of in- infrastructure. Um, so basically as part of that um, that, that, that request process. Um, the designation may include requirements in relation to. Works for the infrastructures such as height, shape, bulk, landscaping or location of the works, for example. Um, may also include uh vehicle and pedestrian access to and circulation on the premises and operating times. And ancillary uses, for, for example, amongst other things. So what that actually means is that um in making that request to the state, to the minister. Council is not the assessment manager, we're not the decision maker uh on the request. Um, but the request is made to the minister where the minister must be satisfied. Um, that this adequate environmental assessment has been undertaken. And that there is a, a, a need for the uh infrastructure that is suppo- is, is proposed. Um, so in making that decision, uh again, set out within the act, the minister. Um, will have regard to all of the planning instruments that are related to the premises, so. In this particular instance, that would include city plan from the local governance perspective. Uh, it will also include uh regard being made to any consultation. Uh, any properly made submission that is made through the request process, and again, that would be to the state, not to council. Um, and then also uh any of the written submissions of the local government, so. Uh, in this regard, um the state, the minister has invited us as council to make a comment on the proposal. And that has led to the assessment report, or the report, sorry that I should say, uh that's been put before you.
Yep, any speakers against councillor Tolty?
Uh, thank you, madam mayor. Um. To my mind, a development of this size and scale and the services that it will provide. Um, you know, in the future with the proposed aged care and so forth. You know, uh we, we seek people to make investment like this all the time and we can't always determine. Where that investment's going to be and the report looks at different places where it might exist and the zone and all those things. But um, to my mind, the, the, and I might be reading into it um incorrectly, but the. The, the proposed submission back has, has negative connotations to my mind. I'm reading it as, oh yes, but. But and but, um and I would have liked a, a response, even, even no response. Because, and I will ask a question if that's right, madam mayor. If coun- as the assessment manager, the state in advising the minister for this ministerial designation. Will go through the state planning um legislation and consider all of the aspects in that. Um, in that uh legislation, including zone, uh environmental requirements and so forth. I mean, I'm assuming that as the assessment manager, the state will be required, as the council would be required. To apply all of those things, so you would expect that um all of the things that have been raised in this submission. Should, with, with or without a council submission, be considered by planning officers advising the minister. So I'd like to find out if that is correct, but also, you know, looking at the, the drawings. And the consideration that it is the en- you know, part of the entrance to Cleveland and so forth. I just think, you know, our community needs all of the services that are provided for within this. And to, to nitpick over, or it feels to me like nitpicking over. Um, the needs analysis and so forth, uh you know, I think we should just say, yes, we really need this and please build it. Thank you.
There was a question asked there. So can I get a response, please?
Assessment, that the assessment by the state.
Yeah.
Under their own legislation, should theoretically be the same as the assessment that council would provide. Because we're both operating under the same legislation, the same guidelines and the same zonings, et cetera.
Okay, Michael.
Uh, yes, councillor through you, madam mayor. The um, correct, I mean, the minister will have to weigh up. Uh, balance often competing interests, so um, you know, as I said in the original explanation. Um, the uh, we're, we're required to, the minister will be required to take into account the, the local planning instrument, which is city plan, so. Um, in terms of the report that's before you, what we were setting out, I suppose, in our report is that. Uh, you know, city plan has a land use, uh is, you know, community expectation or land use uh in the city. Um, it's not zoned appropriately, um but the minister will obviously have regard to that in making the ultimate assessment. I think within our reports, while we acknowledge that there is need for additional services and facilities, but again, just pointing out. That some of the assumptions which underpin that uh need argument has been put forward, we're just raising some questions as we ordinarily would do. If we were the assessment manager and we were raising an information request, for example.
Speaker for, councillor Bishop?
Yeah, just in support of officers and um in relation to councillor Tolty's suggestion that we should just. Not respond, I think it's really important the council has a clear view and relates it to our city plan. I have asked for a district centre's review strategy. I know that's not coming until we do our next preparations for our new city plan. But this is a big strategic piece of um, um infrastructure that really does need to be integrated and. Ideally strategically planned for, it is coming out of uh unanticipated direction. And ending up on a location that was not what we had originally anticipated. So I think it's absolutely appropriate that officers put forward their views um and look at mitigating some of the unlooked for impacts. Also noting that, yes, there are some really um tremendous benefits and also opportunities with the particular. Um, collective of individuals working together with uh enterprises within the city to build a nuanced. Solution that is a private um proposal, so I think there are benefits. Um, and there are also challenges, and I think without council putting in its view on where we should strategically sequence things like this. Um, we would be um derelict in our duty for not responding. So I think it's important that officers put these views forward. Thank you.
Speaker against? Oh, they're being done. I'll hand back to you to sum up councillor Boglari.
Oh, thank you. Um, look, I agree, we do advocate for investment in our city. However, we're elected to not only advocate for investment and enhancement in um the medical field and educational fields and everything. We're also here to advocate for our local residents and the impacts that come across them. The local residents certainly don't feel they are nitpicking um when an out of zone three storey aged care facility will be built along their back fence. And all the impacts that that is having on that local area, as well as the traffic and the hospital in that area. No one is saying anything about the need, we are just trying to get best planning outcomes. And I don't feel the submission isn't biased, I just feel our officers have actually gone through. Um, the redland standards, the redlands needs and have asked the local. With their local knowledge, they have put that into a submission to ask the minister to actually just acknowledge these while they're doing it. Um, and all those planning aspects that, you know, we feel we want for our residents, so with that, I'd like um. Your support um with this amended motion, please.
I'll put the motion councillors, those in favour? Those against? Those in favour, councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Gole, councillor Hewlett. Councillor Edwards, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Beridge. Councillor Bishop, those against councillor Tolty, councillor Williams, thank you. Next item councillors is uh secondary dwellings, and I think councillor Tolty also sent out an alternative, so councillor, would you like to move that? Uh, after discussions with us on Monday.
Thank you, coun- uh, madam mayor. Councillors, thank you for the discussion that we did have. And the amended uh motion that is in front of you reflects the discussions that we've had. With a tiered introduction of um infrastructure uh payments for secondary dwellings. Uh, do you need to get a second to first, madam mayor? Thank you. Um, so this, this was a matter that was brought to us by officers because of um changes in the state. Uh, planning um legislation and the way that it treats uh secondary dwellings such as uh granny flats and so forth. This has been a, almost a gradual thing over a number of years where the definition of a family changed and. Uh, the definition of a secondary dwelling or a granny flat was relaxed. And then ultimately this year, uh the, because in response to the housing crisis, the government changed the legislation to allow people to. Uh, rent out their granny flats or their, their little secondary dwellings um. In order to help house people who couldn't find anywhere to live. And as a result, the um, the, 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 the framework that we had in place for infrastructure payments. Uh, changed and the assessment had to change with it. So as a matter of um discourse and negotiation, we have looked at um the fairest way. To address the concerns that have been raised out of that. This is introducing a new um application of infrastructure fees in order to address the concerns about amenity. And uh development uh primarily in the urban areas, but across the whole city. And so this is proposed to be a way to introduce um extra infrastructure charges to address the ability to. Um, pu- put in uh larger um secondary dwellings than we might have anticipated before. And, and to allow a fair distribution of um infrastructure costs in order to address those um impacts. This uh is something that once we introduce uh as a, as a guideline and a, a policy. Obviously can be reviewed. At this point in time, the legislation changes are relatively new and the impacts also are relatively limited. But it is anticipated by the officers that that impact will grow across the city. So this is bringing in an answer to that anticipated growth and should this not be. Uh, adequate or appropriate to address that, then council will have the opportunity to adjust this. Uh, again, as, as we review next year or in, in, into the future. So uh I thank all the councillors for their discussion and looking at this. Uh, I believe we've done a good job of. Uh, I believe we've done a good job of finding uh fair uh central ground. And I hope that you will uh support this. Thank you.
Speaker against? Councillor Boglari.
Um, um, be- because this is an amended motion, I was seeking some clarification on one of the points, if that's okay.
Okay, just double check, is there any speakers against at this point?
I think that will decide if I'm against it or not.
Councillor Boglari has a question of clarity. Um, this was ba- this, this was based on the broad discussion we had on Monday.
Yes.
Yes, I, I sent all the um.
Yep.
Uh, proposed concepts out on Friday. Um, coun- councillor spoke with officers on Monday. And I, I sent the um finalized um changes as, as written by the officers. And it reflects exactly what we discussed.
Can we get officers to respond to any particular ca- question councillor Boglari?
It's the very last box to do with infrastructure charges. Um. Yep, the very last one, uh, in the planning, in the plan, in the attachment. With all the various planning, um, council amendment to attachment five, adopted infrastructure charges resolution, the very last bit. No, attachment five it's got here. Yeah, but Sarah probably doesn't have the email.
Perhaps you could just ask the question because I'm sure that Janice knows it off by.
I know, I was going by the direction of the chair thing, waiting for that to happen. Okay, I can ask the question. Oh, I thought you were, you were wanting me to wait for Sarah. No, oh, okay. Um, oh, sorry, who's there? Janice, thank you. Um, I'm understanding across the city. Up to a hundred and twelve metre square secondary dwelling gets thirty percent of the infrastructure charge. Over a hundred and twelve get fifty percent of the infrastructure charge. However, in rural zones, um, on lots six thousand metres square or more. And the dwelling is over a hundred and sixty, they only get thirty percent of the infrastructure charges. I thought previously that was fifty percent. And what's the justification in reducing it, please? Because they don't get charged for the services anyway, do they?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Uh, so basically on, if we scroll down to page five of that document. Um, it just might be a bit easier to see um the charges. So we've got the staggers up to eighty five square, or eighty five square metres and above is the thirty percent charge. Um, and then where you're above a hundred and twelve square metres, it'll be fifty percent of the dwelling house charge. Uh, and then the third trigger for payment was the uh rural lots, um, over six thousand square metres. Um, the request from, um, for this alternative motion was to draft that at thirty percent. Um, so in terms of justification, it, it is um difficult. As our officer recommendation stands, um, we're recommending a hundred percent of the charge. So this wasn't an officer, um, an officer recommendation to put forward these percentages.
And can I ask why the officers, uh, stick, uh, the, the officers' choice was a hundred percent?
So basically, the way we've drafted these changes. Uh, what we've tried to do is, is ensure that secondary dwellings um of a standard size, of an expected size for a secondary dwelling. Um, go through the system without any additional application fees, um, application timeframes or infrastructure charges. So that's why we've used that gross floor area limit um as the trigger to um introduce charges. So the way, um, uh, in accordance with our report, what we said is, um, a dual occupancy is two dwellings on a lot. A single dwelling on a lot is a dual, is a dwelling house. And that can include a secondary dwelling and it has to be subordinate to and used in conjunction with that dwelling. So a secondary dwelling isn't a use by itself. So what we're saying is that where a secondary dwelling um is um significant in size. Um, it's potentially bordering on being a dual occupancy. Um, and our existing policy position is that we charge a full a hundred percent dwelling house fee where you do a dual occupancy. So this is saying, um, where you're a second, a, a standard sized secondary dwelling, we're not going to charge you anything. Um, however, where you um are a large secondary dwelling, bordering on a dual occupancy use, we will charge you like a dual occupancy. And that's because the impact on infrastructure of a large secondary dwelling is, is considered to be equivalent of a dual occupancy.
James, could you just explain in square metreage what you consider a large dwelling?
Yeah, through, through you, Madam Mayor. So basically, the officer recommendation was a seventy square metre um gross floor area. Where the lot is up to a thousand square metres. Uh, where the lot size increases, um, our recommendation was to allow a hundred square metre GFA. Um, so that was the limit.
Are you saying, sorry, spirit, sorry for interrupting, are you saying a hundred metres and above is large?
For, for the use.
Anything above hundred.
So, so we were saying that, um, where, as a, as a secondary dwelling, that was the limits that we, um, as officers. And we looked at other planning schemes, um, how they deal with secondary dwellings as well. And the seventy and one hundred was towards the higher end of how other sa- um, southeast Queensland planning schemes um limit a secondary dwelling. We looked at floor plans as well and the seventy square metres allows a comfortable two bedroom secondary dwelling. Uh, the hundred square metres took you up to that comfortable three bedroom size. Um, so as officers, um, we thought that was a suitable limit um to put in to allow people to do a secondary dwelling. Um, without it then bordering on to a dual occupancy use.
Hundred square metres you're considered to be large, you're referring to large.
For, um, in, in, for a secondary dwelling.
Because I know um scenic rim, when you look at their planning scheme, they have only sixty square metres. And that's even on their large rural properties, isn't it? They only have sixty, I believe. So, oh, you might have looked that one up, but um. But I'm just saying, yeah, but I'm just saying even very rural, really rural councils stick to sixty. Um, so I'd be happy to support this if we went back to the officers' infrastructure charges as they proposed. But not as it is here.
All right, so that's a, um, that's a question, but I think it was also speaking against. So, yeah, you know, I understand, I understand. So speaker for, councillor Mackenzie.
Um, after this, discussions that we've had, we've had quite a few discussions on this. So I'm happy to support the motion as, as it has been adjusted. Um, because officers have highlighted that the significant um. Area with the problem, especially in relation to amenity, is in the urban area, not the rural area. Um, the amenity aspect there really doesn't come into play there because you have those large lots. Um, noting that the, the average Australian home is two hun- between two hundred and thirty two to two hundred and fifty two square metres. So, um, I don't think an eighty five square metre um secondary dwelling is overtly large. And certainly on a rural area, um, a hundred and sixty square metres is significantly less than what the average Australian home is now. Um, in speaking of four, can I ask a question as well? Um, in the discussions that we did have, um, there was, because we've got like the fifty percent there. Um, if, is in the wording in this motion, if someone was then to go and put in an application. To do a reconfiguration of lot, to split the lot, they would then be, um, charge the additional. To get that infrastructure up to a hundred percent? Is that, is that, is that worded in this motion and where is that worded in this motion, please?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So that isn't in this motion. So that's basically, um, when an infrastructure charge, so say someone builds a secondary dwelling, we charge them thirty percent of the dwelling house fee. When they do the dual occupancy development, they'll get the credit for the existing um lot, um, or the house. They'll also get credit for the thirty percent that has already been paid for a secondary dwelling. So they would be paying the remaining seventy percent of that dwelling house fee to do it as a dual occupancy. So that isn't in this report, that's part of our adopted infrastructure charges resolution. And it's a standard process for how we deal with all uses.
Against councillor Bishop?
Uh, yeah, I would first of all like to ask, if I may, to the officers. Um, we've been through some of it, but we have um stepped through this many times. Um, I'm very comfortable with where the officer's recommendation was. Can you just explain which are the points that have changed? At the summary of the workshop last week, uh, this week, um, you did a, did a summary. Can you give us any changes from the, what was that summary that appeared for us here, first of all?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So basically, um, the changes, so the gross floor area triggers have increased. But I would argue it's only a slight amount. So we've gone from seventy and one hundred square metres, um, up to eighty five and a hundred and twelve. In addition to that, on rural properties exceeding six thousand square metres, the GFA limit has been increased to a hundred and sixteen square metres. Um, the officer report also recommended having a limit on the number of bedrooms. So it was a two bedroom limit, um, that has been removed from um the alternat- in the alternative. Um, the other change, there was a requirement for the, an acceptable solution. For the um, the secondary dwelling to be located behind the main dwelling house. So that has been removed. Um, and the other change was infrastructure charges. So we've gone from um the recommendation of full infrastructure charges above those gross floor area limits. Um, to a staggered approach, which is the thirty, fifty and then thirty percent for the rural properties.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that clarification. Um, just noting that. Those smaller dwellings that are exempt are effectively auxiliary units, in a sense. Um, and, and I uh was a great advocate for uh council looking at, uh, considering auxiliary units. Um, prior to there being a housing crisis, uh, because I think that there is a need in the community. But I just acknowledge that there is a cautionary tale from, I think it was Ipswich when they did this. That resulted in ninety two percent of every single block being taken up by investors. And a proliferation of many of the exact opposite of what the community anticipated and what the council looked for. Which is that there was a, a huge market shift to deliver product. That wasn't necessarily um, uh, in keeping with the amenity of the local community. I'm concerned that a, a reduction in the infrastructure charges would incentivize that further. And I acknowledge that, um, providing opportunities for individual landowners to explore their opportunities for very sensible granny flats. I think there need to be, or, or equivalent, um, secondary, sorry, auxiliary units. Um, that don't have to be occupied by a, a, a family member. I think that's a good opportunity, but I'm concerned if we remove the uh bedroom number. And I'm concerned if we increase the size of the dwellings. Um, because I think we're effectively building proxy houses. And I think the potential for that to run in a direction that we would be very difficult. We'll find it very difficult to curtail at a later point. Um, I, I think the cautionary tale from other places leaves me to pause. I would prefer to stick with the officer's recommendation of seventy and one hundred. And also keep the two bedroom uh suggestion. And also keep the location uh for amenity behind the major um, um dwelling. Just so that we don't have, and look for amenity anomalies that rise and then will not be stopable. Um, because I think that's the lesson from Ipswich, having followed the, the journey. And I also think that infrastructure charges, we should allow people the opportunity to build these as, as exempt. And if they are going to go down a different pathway, I think we should seek the, the full uh cost associated. Um, and if that doesn't work, we may choose to incentivize that later. But I think it's early days. I think these sorts of units have not been rapidly rolled out. But I suspect when the market shifts and uh access to building um costs and uh. Um, infrastructure is more readily available, I think we'll see a proliferation of these. And uh that may be a really good thing, but I'm concerned if we extend to eighty five square metres, a hundred and twelve, no bedroom limit. That we'll effectively be having um tiki-taki little boxes in places where we might not have anticipated. I think the officer's recommendation is better, that's my preference.
Speaker for, any further speakers? If not, I'll hand back to councillor Tulsey to sum up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As was mentioned by councillor Mackenzie. The average home that is built uh is around two hundred and twenty six square metres. That is a basic family home in Australia and they go up and down from there. So two hundred and twenty six square metres is a considerable difference from uh what's being proposed. And I do not accept an argument that that is a, that, that these sizes are a significant family home. Removing the bedroom uh limits, we have, uh, bedroom limits are used as a measure. In the uh state building regs, but they are problematic in my view at a local level. And we've experienced this a number of times before, uh, especially on the islands where we use bedroom limits. To uh measure sewage output, which is extremely problematic. It does not give us the number of people that will live in a house. And we ultimately come to the point where we have inspectors arguing with people over the width of doorways. Because uh a room that has a doorway eighteen hundred wide is not considered a bedroom. And a room that has a, a, a doorway a hundred and ten millimetres wide is considered a bedroom. So ultimately what happens is people don't abide by that. They build the room. And under the building regulations, if you do minor amendments to your home, uh, under three thousand dollars without a contract. You do not require any approvals. So, you know, there is a, a false expectation that we can control things, uh, that we just simply cannot. So mu- removing the bedrooms and sticking to a gross habitable floor area is a much simpler measure. As I noted, this is a new introduction and a change to the way we have applied infrastructure fees. We have never had infrastructure fees before to uh secondary dwellings. Or where a, an independent asset hasn't been um produced, except for in commercial uh, uh matters. So it's introductory, we will have opportunity to review it and alter it. The reason that the um rural area at its tier one, and we have proposed and we did discuss. Two tiers in the urban area, we have one tier in the uh rural area. And the first tier in each area is at thirty percent and the second tier is at fifty percent. And we have acknowledged in our discussions that in the rural area, the impact is far less. They don't have access to as many services and so forth as they do in the um urban area. They will be paying and I, I found the comment that uh we were going to collect less infrastructure charges um problematic. Because we're not, we're proposing a brand new charge that we haven't charged before. And overall, the community through the council will be collecting more dollars in infrastructure with this. Than we would otherwise have. Where we currently do not collect any infrastructure charges on secondary dwellings. We will be collecting infrastructure charges on secondary dwellings. So that is an increase, not a decrease. And we have to find a way through uh in order to find a fair and reasonable way to introduce these. To be fair to the community, to cover the costs of those impacts. And the impacts on a seven hundred fifty square metre lot are considerably greater than the impacts on a twenty thousand square metre lot. Um, those people will still have an option to build larger houses, but they will pay the infrastructure fees at, at that um level. If council sees fit and this problem be- actually becomes greater. We're only aware of a very small number of cases at the moment where this has been, I guess. A way for landowners to circumvent the normal planning um framework. And to achieve um secondary incomes that were greater than what was otherwise uh expected. Uh, and remembering that um the Building Act also covers all of this construction. And all of your usual setback site cover rules, et cetera, all apply as well. So this is a very fair and reasonable way to introduce a brand new concept um in how we might charge this fee. And remembering that the reason that we've come to the point where we may need to have this fee. Is because the state government purposely changed the regulations in order to try to address the housing shortage. Now, to go to a hundred percent uh infrastructure fees, in my mind, would be counterproductive. To that uh aspirational goal of helping people to reduce the housing crisis. Secondly, this allows families who are currently uh experience, experiencing extreme mortgage stress. To legally rent out their granny flat or their, their secondary apartment. Previously, they were only allowed to have people living there who were family members. And they were not allowed to publicly advertise and rent it out. Um so this means that we, by introducing the fee, we're being fair to the city, we're being fair to all of the other community members. We are collecting more infrastructure fees than that we otherwise would. We are addressing a problem that has come up with the way we assess secondary dwellings. That progress to dual occupancy or uh sp- uh lot splitting. And we are also allowing those families who are struggling under mortgage stress to find a way to uh. Bring in a little extra income while solving a problem for someone who can't find a place to live. So I commend this to your councillors and I ask you to support it, remembering that you can change those levels. When and if you think there is a greater problem than what we currently have.
I'll put I'll put the motion councillors, those in favour, those against. Those in favour, councillor Mitchell, councillor Gole, councillor Edwards, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Williams, those against. Councillor Bocklary, Hewlett, Beridge and Bishop, thank you. Now councillors, I have been advised, there's um there is lunch outside, but maybe we might might get through this last item before we. Head out there, if that's okay, which is um really going straight to item eighteen point one, which is councillor Hughes' um notice of motion. Up to councillor Hughes.
Uh thank you, Mayor, and.
Councillor, so councillor Hughes is moving it, councillor Mackenzie is seconding it. I'd like to hear councillor Hughes.
Uh thank you, Mayor. This is the uh my first notice of motion. I've been a councillor for eight years and. Uh I've put a lot of work into this behind the scenes for twelve months odd with our council officers. We're predominantly talking about John Frederick Park, which is situated at Banfield Lane in Kapalaba. Which has a strip of shops, some old, some new, uh but most importantly, it has a couple of our sporting. Clubs that are really in need of some extra eyes and extra support. And we've got many issues over there. But also we understand we've got many constraints with the flooding and the car parking. So it was suggested. That the best way that we as a council could put eyes on this area is through a notice of motion. And working with officers with with a lead, with uh Chris Isles from our uh general manager of Amped, um under his umbrella. And I have asked Chris to speak to this very briefly because we've had many site meetings. And I note in point three. Of the motion, there is a slight typo down the at the bottom, that updates be brought back yearly. As to the progress, it says at, that should be as. That's just a typo there. And we have, as a council, um discussed what that would look like. And potentially whether that become uh be coming back to us as a workshop versus a report. And uh Chris uh will speak to that also uh wi- with uh some points of confidentiality. What what I'm trying to achieve here is just to cir- circumvent uh silos of council over many, many years. Master planning, uh if officers come, officers go, and we just need an overarching eyes on this area. As to what potential that we may be able to see in coming years. Not no dollar value to this. No immediate impact. This is a long term project. What could we do in this area? Thank you.
So I acknowledge you've asked um Chris, general manager of Amp to outline. Yeah, and and in particular, I think you raised earlier, and there was discussion earlier at least on item three. As to updates versus workshops versus reports. So maybe if we can focus on that, because I think that's probably the point. Yeah, can Chris?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and and thank you councillor Hughes. Uh so I guess I I had the the opportunity on behalf of a lot of parts of council. To to work with councillor Hughes on this. The reality is, this precinct is a very complicated one. Uh like many parts of our city, it has many uh parts of our organisation, uh all working probably in a somewhat of a kind of a dance. Um and we recognise here, we have parts of Cosam, we have parts of our community uh C S V teams, we have property teams. Because we have some leased assets there that belong uh or rented by other parties, economic development aspects of the commercial strip. Um and and no doubt a lot of others. Um I think the the question that was put to us by councillor Hughes was, uh are we confident as officers? That all of us are working together um to make sure there is a consistent or a strategic outcome for that site. And our answer was, of course, we believe we are. Uh every part of our organisation has strategic plans or intent of what they're working through on their various parts of the site. Um I guess the. In in an analogy sense, we all have our own independent blueprint of what we're all doing. Uh what councillor Hughes was asking for us is to bring all of those blueprints together. So there was a consistent blueprint across the whole lot. Um so as councillor Hughes said, what the outcome of this is, we don't believe it'll commit us to any additional work. Uh we believe that we have the intent and we're not, we're working towards that. But what it is, probably more conscious um and and deliberate act into activity. To bring our officers together in a in a more strategic alignment sense to ensure that we are all working together and those blueprints are making sense. So we're very happy to do that. Because, so we we are already working in this precinct actively and perhaps on a daily basis. So we don't think there's any additional work done on behalf of staff. Um in terms of point three in the report back to council, but what councillor uh Hughes had asked us was, can we find a way to just bring a regular update to show progress? Um so I'm happy to be guided by you all on what that might look like, uh so that we can demonstrate uh to the councillor perhaps and then all of you. That progress has been made and there is some opportunity to align and and make some strategic decisions along the way. Um whether that goes back to this council in in a workshop sense or whether it's just a a report or an update that we can provide. Recognising that the the key stakeholders, perhaps the user facility would perhaps also be interested in that. So I think it would be pensive of interest to make sure that it's not then held up. In in a confidential sense, it might be in a workshop if that was the only way that that report was brought back. So I think that's the intent uh on for councillor Hughes. Um and officers are very happy to support that.
Any speakers against? Against councillor Bishop?
Um first of all, I want to acknowledge that councillor Hughes has been uh actively involved in this um. Area with her community for a very long period of time. And there are challenges in that area. Uh there are legacy concerns and there are um uh challenges with zoning and surrounding infrastructure. And I totally understand and support the notion of what is intended here. My concern is uh in relation to the strategic integration of this proposal. With council's overall responsibilities to the rest of the city and to other community groups. And also in relation to the Berkdale Community Precinct, which as we now know, is going to be a sizable and significant. Um project that does need to be coordinated and integrated. I'm not convinced. Uh and I know the process of how it's come to a notice of motion, um but I'm not convinced that this is the way to strategically integrate it. I believe that uh there's great merit in the um department of Amped, which is advocacy, major projects and economic development. I think we've got an exemplary officer in in Chris Isles. Um I would like to see, before we start to invest in. Optimize investment in community supporting infrastructure, that's that's a big thing to do across the city. And if we're going to do that just here. Why aren't we going to have in optimize investment in community supporting infrastructure, including car park, through a property led approach to land use optimization and zoning. Via city plan across the city or in areas that need it. Um. Dot point B refers to improve integration of John Frederick's Park with other parts of Kapalaba. Um Principal Activity Centre, Kapalaba Regional Park and Berkdale Community Precinct, which is a large area. Through regional green and active transport network connections. Now, there's an active travel plan that's connecting Kapalaba with Berkdale at the moment. And I think we could do that with this. Then the next dot point talks to ensure opportunities for inclusion of affordable housing. In appropriate locations within the Kapalaba Centre. This is a question now. Kapalaba Centre, does that include all of those in the previous paragraph? Which includes the Berkdale Precinct, because the the previous reference.
Put that to bed really quickly.
Yeah, that's that's why it's a question, because the previous.
Well, I mean.
Sentence says Kapalaba Principal Activity Centre. This refers to Kapalaba Centre and that's a a bigger thing. So is it? What's the what's the footprint?
It's not Berkdale, that's what we're trying to, if you're trying to, that's the question.
Well, that now the previous paragraph leads me to think that it could be because it's part of the, you know, connected thing, we're connecting it.
Yeah, but you you also have just seen L G that says something completely different. But anyway, Chris?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and and thank you, councillor, for the question. I mean, the intended idea is to reference, I guess, what we would all, the principal activity centre. Where we have affordable housing, we have multi level um housing being built, as an example, to show your project. Um and really just, I think I was just trying to recognise that we will have increased density, um as perhaps. Uh your public participant mentioned this morning, you know, more people living in apartments and housing in and around the Kapalaba precinct. And the opportunity to make sure that those residents have access to high quality open space and amenity facilities nearby, because they're not going to have that in their backyard. So I think that was just the connection. So for absolute clarity, um it was referencing the principal activity centre. And if you would like to make that amendment for for your. For clarity, then I don't think that changes the effect of.
I I would I would welcome that, just so that we've got that clarity. Um um but I also think that the in. The changes in Kapalaba are substantially significant for the whole of this city. Um and I think that they, rather than coming back. Uh with a yearly um updates, um I I. I think we should explore what we're learning along the way. And I would like there to be some other process in the in the discussion. The other day I suggested that we. We actually have it as a um uh a whole of city discussion point, because I think it is relevant to all of us. Um then there was suggested that we might come back as a workshop, but I understand there's some confidentiality around that. I I I seek ways to actually make it part of an integrated. Uh learning opportunity, as it were, like a pilot project, um which is probably the intent. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I think that's the intent. Um but I just, I'm concerned that one councillor may get access to that information and not share all of that with all of the other councillors in that. It's not because the intention, but it's the concern with not having a strategic integration of how this is actually going to be applied. Um I I know that councillor um Mitchell has mentioned uh issues in in uh Cleveland and wanting to address things here. And there's also other issues in other centres. Again, comes back to the centres review process. So they're just some of my concerns.
Speaker four, councillor Talty?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think at one time or another, certainly over the ten years that I've been in council. Uh councillors have sought to clarify master plans or how their, particularly their sporting areas. And recreation areas fit into the broader plan of the area in which it sits. This is not uncommon. And it is a little bit difficult in the silos that present to us when we're trying to get these um understandings. And I commend uh councillor Hughes. She's she's put a year's worth of work into getting this through. She hasn't brought this lightly. She's talked to all of the right people. She's got all of the wording here. Uh and it is an area that we've discussed a number of times with um the private land holdings and the road. And then there's been changes in um ownership of particular parcels of land. We've got flooding issues, we've got parking issues. We've got issues with the clubs, et cetera. And bringing that all together in a in a in a document that lets people see what we intend and what the issues are. Is a sensible thing. And how that sits in the context of the broader plan is is absolutely something we should be looking at. So I'm very happy to support this today. I think that it's more than reasonable. And uh and as I say, it's been a long time. Um in discussion. And councillors do prefer that individual councillors don't bring, you know, motions specific to the area. And so forth. That's a bit of a a point of um differentiation, I guess. But you know, at some point, the county, the local area councillor may need, feel they need to do that. And uh and that is absolutely their right. So I support councillor Hughes with her motion.
Speaker against, councillor Mitchell?
Hmm, I I was, I'll I'll speak against. I think this um motion highlights a great desire. From a number of councillors to have a sustainable model that this council, that the ambition of 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 council. Is to work across the silos, to communicate clearly to councillors and the community. But I think this reflects that there is still an element of, we're not there yet. And. Congratulations to 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 councillor for working for a year on this. Well, for six or seven years, I've been looking at precinct management. Uh Cleveland Centre Management, Principal Activity Centre Management, brought a notice of motion on centres managers. So. We've been circling around this and I could bring in the same issues that uh relate to this area. Cleveland Town Centre, Raven Bay Fourshaw Park, William Street, Cleveland Point, every township in North Stradbroke Island. And I'm sure every other councillor could bring up an area. So um I think the intent of the motion is fantastic. But probably reflects, we uh we as a councillor, not there yet, in confidently. Having all the business units of council working together, or if they are, that being reported back in some way. There are so many things, we don't know what the report's going to be like, we're going to get back to that. The fact that there's no dollars associated with this, maybe not in the budget sense. But there will be significant um officer time involved if it's going to be done well. But a model that may come out of that, which is the same as I've been hoping to talk about and other councillors have been. What is that model that crosses across all business units, is efficient, timely, fits with the corporate plan, the the ethos of council? I think that isn't covered here. And again, we're off on our own adventure with great respect. Uh rather than it being, well, let's solve the real problem at hand, which is. Come up with a model that is workable and sustainable across all the precincts. And indeed, what is a precinct? What thresholds is a precinct? And then work back from there. So love the intent, but um. I could bring seven noms and may maybe I will, if that's what it takes to get that attention on it. Um because area by area, I think we're going to fail. The model needs to be what we look at. Thank you.
Speaker four, councillor Boll.
Uh thanks, Madam Chair. Uh well done, councillor Hughes. Um I'll keep it short and sweet. I am going to support this. Uh we've just taken a vote on fourteen point two, voting for a precinct site without any future costings. So I I don't buy this whole, you know, what's in it for me approach. Well done, Trace. Thank you.
Speaker against? Question?
Thank you. I'm reading the motion and to me it's very vanilla. All this work is being done. In bits. Um so what what's the motion try if through you to Chris? What's the motion going to change?
Uh three, Madam Mayor, thank you councillor. Uh I think the intention is probably uh to ensure that we can articulate. Um the independent pieces of work that we're doing. I guess, as officers, we never like the word silos because they imply that we don't talk together. We actually talk an enormous amount. Um there's an enormous amount of connection between um Louise's team and the Coles team in terms of C S V and Cosam and and the predominant uses of that precinct. Um a little bit Mike on the development team, Louise's property team, there's an enormous amount of connection. So silos is a strong word. Um we would probably. Say uh what we're after is a more deliberate connection and overt um sin, you know, bringing all those pieces together in a more deliberate kind of way. So. Uh we do it at Cock, we do it through our various pieces of work. Um as I said, my position with councillor Hughes from the start of this and and officers. Because it's not just me on this, is that we are very confident we have the planning and thinking and strategic work either in place or to do. Uh of how we will manage this precinct moving forward, trying to make sure that they all come together in perhaps a more aligned, strategic kind of way, to make sure that they are. You know, we we also recognise that we can be working somewhat necessarily not not aligned. We want to make sure that this is an opportunity perhaps we are to work. Bring some of those pieces, align them up slightly different timings or bring forward some different things if it makes strategic sense to do one piece, knowing. Say what the left and the right hand are doing to make um more strategic decisions. So I think the intention and the the what will change is this. I I expect that we will be working a little bit more strategically, um and making some more considered and overt decisions as as a group of people. I I don't believe it'll take a lot of additional resources. We're not intending to produce a new piece of work, but there's no outcome from this in terms of a master plan or a visioning document. The report back was intended to just be a progress update to kind of demonstrate what has been doing and things that might have changed, not a not a big weighty piece of work, if if that helps.
Yeah, I I really couldn't see any work that needed to do because it's just to note that this motion seeks to provide visibility. So you've just got to tell us what you're doing in this area. So um I'm surprised then that it goes to A, B, C, D, E. Point two and three as well. Um to me, perhaps the motion should have been. Um for us to look at our organisational structure to make sure everyone's talking together or something. Um I I. I I don't know whether I'll support it or not, because I really don't see the um the. The vanilla, it's it's just so vanilla. Um I I can't really see that there's a positive or a negative with it. If the intent is to get everyone talking together, I think that should have been um something about organisational structure. And um you know, councillor Bishop and a few councillors mentioned repeatedly, we need a centre's management strategy. Um perhaps with the coming budget, we'll actually let the officers have some money for that this time round. Um you know, it's been said publicly, even in court, that we don't have a centre's management strategy and that is an issue with our city plan. Um, you know, it's been said publicly, even in court, that we don't have a centres management strategy, and that is an issue with our city plan. So it's publicly out there that we don't have one, and I think this is what this is asking for. Uh, I wish wording like that had been put in here, um, because I think that's what you're trying to do.
What I actually.
Is get a, a better process happening.
What I, what I read there, what you're talking about is the strategies, uh, that sit above that. What councillor Hughes, how I read it, is she wants to know what's happening operationally.
Yep.
That's not, that's not about districts, a district.
The strategy she's saying here to contribute to the delivery of the Capella Bar Master Plan, well, if we had a centre's strategy, we'd know where that centre's boundaries were.
We have that.
And what was expected in it. Um, and
So we already, we do, we do have that.
Mitchell said, I, I could bring back my issues with Wellington Point Village or, you know, I'm sure there's Redland Bay issues, I, like, all our villages have issues. So I think, to, to me, the reading of this motion is to get a better structure and knowledge about our centres and how the, we're all working to enhance them going forward. It's just a bit vanilla for me.
So that's a speaker against, I think. It wasn't exactly a question. Is there another speaker for? You're, you're, you're speaking against it. Well, I don't, until I have a speaker for, so I'll speak for it. Um, I think it's very easy for councillors to want to li- lift it up into the strategic area of our considerations. Um, we hear it all the time and, but I think what's, what is different about Capella Bar, and I can speak from experience, is that you have in, in that principal activity area and surrounding it, you have elements that you don't have in any other principal activity centre. Sporting organisations, um, et cetera, that actually have, have to work in with, uh, what is legacy issues from plans many years ago. You don't have quite that in any other principal activity centre. Um, so I, I understand frustration that councillor Hughes has been experiencing, having been the local councillor for that area, where sporting clubs were built without car parks. Where, um, you know, you have the legacy of organisations that live, that are built on a flood plain. I can't say that for any other principal activity centre that I know of, and I've been around a while um, in, in the city. And so knowing how the work that's happening in that space is addressing some of those issues and more broadly, um, we do have a master plan. And we have talked about another master plan. We do have a, a designation of what the principal activity centre, um, is, because that's all part of our planning scheme. So, um, it, it is a very unique part of our city that has probably, um, issues that no other principal activity centre has. Um, so with that, I've spoken to it. I can have councillor Hu- Hewlett wants to speak against it.
Thank you, madam mayor. Um. I've always been against motions that put an impost on council as far as capital, and I completely agree with councillor Mitchell, and I completely agree with councillor McGlory. This is a passive attempt to get a project prioritised, in my opinion. And now that this motion's coming forward, the officers are going to be, well, council voted for this, and suddenly other, other people's projects are going to fall below the line as we work in Capella Bar. That's my opinion. And I just think there's a better way to deal with this, as councillor Mitchell, councillor Gole have outlined, or councillor Gole, councillor, um, what's his name, Bishop, sorry. So, yeah, um, I won't support it. And that, uh, it has merit, and I wish I could bring motion forward, as, as councillor Mitchell said, for every, every capital project of mine that has fallen below the line for the last twelve years. And there's lots of them. Um, but I'm not going to bring a motion out of respect for my colleagues. Thank you.
Going to bring your attention to point two. Um, which actually, it tells you that it's not about, um, jumping capital pro- processes, capital approval processes. That's basically said, still subject to council's processes and, um, budget. It's just bringing information together, not, it's not about capital. Um, I'm going to, a- any other speakers for? If there are no question?
The Capella Bar Master Plan was tabled on February twenty eleven. Maybe, um, best ask Chris this, through, through the chair, please. Uh. Wouldn't that document cover a lot that's in this motion? Because with that, it's still a live document.
So, thank, through you, madam mayor, thank you councillor for the question. Uh, the, the master plan you referred to actually didn't deal at all with the Sportsfield Precinct. So um, this is primarily, in fact, almost entirely about John Frederick Park and, and that precinct. Um, the, the town centre plan that you're referring to doesn't deal with that at all. It is a land use plan. Uh, this is not a land use plan, this is more of an operational aspect. So the zonings that we're looking here, um, are not involved.
Now, in, in the, sorry, Chris, but is it through the chair? Um, in the master plan, it does extend to John Frederick Park. And there, there was a desire to put a boardwalk through there, um, and an eatery. So it did go as far as John Frederick Park. Could we not go back and just review that, revisit that and um, add that, add the vision before we vote on this?
This is not about the strategic planning of Capella Bar CBD or the master plan. It's actually about the operational elements that go on. I think that's been explained. So I think that's a different, I'm happy to review both the Cleveland and the Capella Bar Master Plan, but it won't address the concerns um, and the outputs this is addressing. And I'll get officers to confirm with me, because it's not, it's not a strategic document we're after.
No, you, thank you, madam mayor, thank you councillor for the question. Yeah, look, that was certainly, uh, I think the intent of councillor Hughes, it's not to, yeah. So, you're right councillor, I, I, I think that's certainly the intention, is not to re-prosecute the, the precinct plans or Capella Bar there. Uh, we believe as officers, you know, apart of, of David, um, who's been part of this process as well, that, that planning remains contemporary. Um, there's no need, uh, to review that town centre pla- principal activity plan as it stands now. This is fun- fundamentally about an operational aspect of how that Parkland precinct, Sportsfield precinct will be developed over a period of time to ensure that our, our offices are aligned in that. So we don't believe there's a need to review the strategic intent, um, or policy documents as they relate.
Councillor Hughes, would you like to sum up?
All I've been seeking with officers for a long time is to support the clubs and the precinct and what we can do together. So I, I was really very, um, specific that there are no dollar values here. It is business as usual, but business as usual is sometimes difficult within council to deal with. We've now got an AMPT team, and we've now got Chris here, leading our AMPT team. And this is a project that could be supported under that AMPT umbrella. And this is an area that needs that specialised, um, overview. There is so many layers here, there are so many different issues. I was just looking to enhance what we're doing, bring it under an umbrella and support officers, support community, and through council seek to have some, some support from you all, that this work comes back in some sort of report, that here we are, this is what we're doing. If this is a pilot project for AMPT and we can learn from that for, for other precincts, fabulous. But this is just to support our community down there at John Frederick Park that need that extra little bit of support, overarching that we've got eyes on it as one. Thank you. No other intent, no other jumping the line. This is work that is being done. But can we just pull it together under our AMPT umbrella and work together? Thanks.
Thank you councillor Hughes. With that, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Those against? Those in favour, councillor McGlory, councillor Mitchell, councillor Gole, councillor Edwards, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Beridge, councillor Williams, those against? Councillor Hewlett and councillor Bishop. Thank you councillors. So councillor, I haven't been advised of any, I haven't been advised of any, um, urgent business. We do have three confidential items. I, my question to you right now is, do you need to go into confidential session? Or are you happy just to move and second the motions? Well, you've got a list of them at, at the end of your agenda, I think. We don't need to go into confidential? So which case can I have a mover for twenty point one, please? Move councillor Edwards, second to councillor Hewlett, those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Item twenty point two, uh, mover and second, thanks for the significant contracting plan, digital transformation programme. Move councillor Mitchell, second councillor Talty, those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Item twenty point three, significant contracting plan, digital transformation programme implementation partner, move councillor Edwards, second councillor Hughes, those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Sorry? It's okay. Um, I haven't either, I'll do it, looking at that right now. So with that, councillors, um, thank you for your participation this morning, and I close the meeting at twelve forty.